Hello, the NVUSD Board of Education is holding a regular board meeting tonight, and we invite participation either remotely or in person. Directions on how to participate via Zoom are available at nvusd.org/board. The open session part of the meeting will begin at around 7:00 p.m. I'll have to gavel it in. Good evening, now the meeting is officially commenced. Before heading into closed session, Ms. Green, do we, the board is available for public comment on closed session agenda items. Ms. Green, do we have any public comment on closed session agenda items?
There is no public comment on closed session items.
Seeing that there are none, the board will now adjourn into closed session. Good evening, my name is Eve Reiser, and this is the Napa Valley Unified School District Board of Education. The NVUSD Board of Education is holding a regular board meeting tonight, and we invite participation either remotely or in person. Directions on how to participate via Zoom are available at nvusd.org/board. Interpretation in Spanish is available for tonight's virtual board meeting. Our interpreters are Francisco Mesa and Isidro Mencos. One of the interpreters will now translate the directions on our English channel so our Spanish-speaking families may hear the instructions.
Buenas noches, la reunión del Distrito Unificado, el Distrito Escolar Unificado de Napa Valley de esta noche va a tener interpretación simultánea en español. Para poder acceder al servicio de interpretación, en breves momentos ustedes van a ver en su pantalla de Zoom, en la parte de abajo, un icono del globo terráqueo. Pueden hacer clic allí y escoger el idioma español o Spanish. Si están en su tableta o en su teléfono celular, van a ver tres puntitos, y al hacer clic allí para encontrar la opción de interpretación. Eligen el idioma Spanish o español, y no se olviden de poner una palomilla en listo o done cuando lo hayan hecho. Gracias. Back to you.
Thank you very much. Can we please start with an attendance roll call from Verma Morales, Executive Assistant?
Yes, student board member Grayden?
Present.
Trustee Reiser?
Present.
Trustee Chu?
Present.
Trustee González Maris?
Here.
Trustee Hart?
Present.
Trustee Jankowicz?
Present.
Trustee Martin?
Present.
Trustee Water?
Present.
Forum present, thank you.
Thank you for joining us tonight for our NVUSD Board meeting. E1, Report on Closed Session. Trustee González Maris, do you have a report on closed session agenda items?
Yes, we do. In regards to, with respect to every item of business to be discussed in closed session, which is pursuant to Ed. Code 35146 and 48912, 20 Government Code Sections 49060 and 49078, and the Family Rights and Privacy Act, in regards to student matters, the board recommends for the expulsion of student 01162025A.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Morales, may we have a roll call? Oh, wait, I'm sorry, can I get a first?
Motion to expel.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a first from Trustee Hart, a second from Trustee Jankowicz. Ms. Morales, may we have a roll call vote?
Yes, Trustee Reiser?
Aye.
Trustee Chu?
Aye.
Trustee González Maris?
Aye.
Trustee Hart?
Aye.
Trustee Jankowicz?
Aye.
Trustee Martin?
Aye.
Trustee Water?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you.
The next item the board also recommends for the readmission from expulsion for student 10122023B.
Thank you, can I get a motion?
Move to readmit.
I'll second.
Thank you, first from Trustee Hart, a second from Trustee Chu. Ms. Morales, may we have a roll call vote?
Yes, Trustee Reiser?
Aye.
Trustee Chu?
Aye.
Trustee González Maris?
Aye.
Trustee Hart?
Aye.
Trustee Jankowicz?
Aye.
Trustee Martin?
Aye.
Trustee Water?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Morales. This brings me to item E2, the flag salute. I'd like to invite our ACA-
President Reiser, there's one more item-
Another closed session item, I'm sorry.
Yes, it's all right. This was, a previous item was in regards to D1, Student Discipline. This is in regards to item D7, with respect to items related to existing litigation, Government Code Section 54956.9. The board approved a settlement agreement to resolve the students' educational claims. And this concludes my report.
Thank you very much. Okay, now we're to item E2, and can I invite the American Canyon football coach, Mr. Hudson, to lead us in the flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Go Wolves!
Thank you so much, Mr. Hudson. E3, Announcement. This meeting is livestreamed and recorded via Zoom, and will be archived on the district YouTube channel. For a detailed review of any meeting agenda item, the archived video can be referenced on the district's webpage at nvusd.org. The process for public comment can also be found on the district's webpage. Okay, so now we have E4, Approval of the Agenda.
Amendments.
And we have an amendment to that agenda. I would like to move that we move item J1A and items K1B, and then in that order, item J1B, after public comment on non-agenda items.
I'll move with the amendments.
Second.
Okay, we have a first from Trustee Chu, a second from Trustee Hart, all in favor?
Aye.
So now we have approval of minutes, the approval of the December 12th, 2024 minutes.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
First from Trustee Chu, second from Trustee Hart, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And we have item E5B, the minutes from December 19th, 2024. Can I get a motion?
I'll move to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a first from Trustee Chu, a second from Trustee Hart, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then, item E6, Recognition of Visitors and Employee Organizations. Dr. Masetti.
Tonight neither our CSEA president nor NVEA president were available to attend the meeting. Oh, is Jackie here? Oh, I didn't know you were coming! Okay, with that, I was looking for you online. Great, so this is the new CSEA president, Ms. Jackie Clayton, who's present this evening. So come on up, Jackie! And she is here with other members. So if you can turn on the microphone, that button right there, and introduce yourself, President Clayton, and go ahead and address the school board, thank you.
Good evening, school board. Dr. Masetti, I am Jackie Clayton. I am the now-new president for our CSEA local chapter, Napa Chapter 184. We are, we just finished our cycle for elections, and I have brought some of our officers with me, and so let me introduce you two.
My name is Jasmine Barajas, and I am the first vice president of the union. Thank you, Masetti, and, oh.
Last one.
Hi, I'm Rosalita Treasure.
Travis?
Hello, Travis, Member-at-Large.
So, we look forward to our continued work and the improving, always improving education at Napa Valley Unified, and that's all I want to say. Have a good evening.
And President Clayton, thank you for your presence and bringing your full team tonight. We really appreciate that, it's excellent.
Thank you so much. I'm so sorry, Ms. Morales, I need to go back to item E5, the approval of minutes. I see on my notes I missed that we do have two abstentions, really, it should be Trustee Jankowicz, and then Trustee Martin was not on the board for that meeting, so, can, for December 12th. So can we redo that vote for the approval of minutes for the December 12th, 2024 meeting? My apologies. So, um...
Make a motion?
Yeah, can I get a motion to revote?
I will move to revote.
And I will second. This will be for the December 12th.
Yes, for the December 12th, approval of the, December 12th minutes, my mistake. Okay, so we have a first from Trustee Chu, a second from Trustee Hart, all in favor?
Aye.
Any abstentions?
Trustee Jankowicz and Trustee Martin abstain.
Thank you for allowing me to correct the record. Okay, and now, now we have the recognition of Students of the Month. We are starting with the Vintage High School. Will Principal Hutchinson please present the Students of the Month for Vintage High School?
Good evening, Dr. Masetti, President Reiser, and members of the board. Thank you for this opportunity to honor our Vintage Crusher students this evening. First up, we are honoring and recognizing Audrey Manley, who is a senior at Vintage High School. Audrey has consistently demonstrated excellence in the classroom and on the field, and in various leadership aspects at Vintage High School. She's ranked in the top 10% of her class, and has challenged herself with a rigorous academic schedule, taking multiple AP honors and even college-level courses throughout her high school career. Audrey recently committed to Sonoma State University, where she will play softball next year. She's been a starting varsity athlete as catcher for all four years at Vintage, and has earned all league honors for three years of them, and we are eager to see what the spring season brings to Audrey and her team. Her commitment to the sport is evident, as she balances a serious club schedule and batting practices in Sacramento and much more, but it's not just her athleticism that stands out for Audrey. She is a captain who has strong, positive relationships with all her teammates and her coaches, and her teammates and coaches value her example and her leadership. Audrey's leadership extends well beyond the field. She's been in the leadership class at Vintage since her freshman year. She's participated in various clubs and is an inaugural member of the Vintage Athletic Council, and this year she is leading Vintage as ASB Director of Activities. As I said, on and off the field, Audrey shows respect and kindness to everyone, helping to set a positive tone for our entire school community. She has developed many friendships and positive relationships, not just with her peers, but with staff, coaches, and many more throughout Vintage, NVUSD, and our Napa community. This was evident from her signing day celebration in November. There were so many guests and attendees in attendance that we needed to hold the event in our little theater, which is a first, I believe, and I had the pleasure and privilege of being in attendance at this celebration, and was able to witness and see firsthand the love and appreciation that so many of our students, so many members of our community have for Audrey. We look forward to the rest of her senior year with us at Vintage, and look forward to what's in store for her in spring semester. Congratulations, Audrey. Good evening. First, I'd love to thank the Board of Education, Dr. Masetti, and Vintage High for this incredible opportunity and for the kind acknowledgement. It truly means a lot to me to be here this evening to receive this award in front of my family and school community. As I reflect on my time at as a student at NVUSD and currently at Vintage High School, I feel immense gratitude for the people who have been instrumental in my growth and success. I'd like to take a few, a moment to take, to thank a few special staff members of Vintage High who have helped shape my journey. First, Hannah Housley, who's here today, my leadership teacher for the past four years, who has been a constant source of guidance and support, helping me refine my leadership skills as I took on different roles in the class, most recently as the ASB Director of Activities. Her mentorship allowed me to grow in ways I never expected. I also want to acknowledge Kelly Watkins, who not only counseled me through school, but has helped me develop a sense of compassion and gratitude towards my community that I'll carry with me forever. Ms. Watkins pushed me to take advanced placement courses and honors classes, which set me, which set me up for success when I doubted my own abilities. Another special acknowledgement to Mr. Rich Anderson and Ms. Tracy Caviedal for supporting me as a student athlete and always creating a space for me to feel welcome on campus. My time at Vintage has been filled with academic and athletic failures and successes that have helped me, shaped me into the person I am today. I've loved being a part of the school's athletic programs as a four-year varsity softball player, where I've learned the true meaning of, meaning of hard work and perseverance. I have created long-lasting friendships playing for my school and representing my hometown. Leadership has been an instrumental part of my journey as well. Starting in elementary school at El Central Elementary, I was introduced to leadership roles by Mrs. Morton and Ms. Gonzalez, and then at Redwood Middle School under the three-year guidance of Mrs. Tare. In high school, I was able to grow my leadership skills each year while serving on the Deanna Becker Club and Best Buddies Club, the Athletic Council, and currently ASB Director of Activities. This role has given me the chance to bring our school together and make a positive impact. I am incredibly proud of what we've accomplished as a leadership class. As I move forward into the next chapter of my life, I am excited to continue growing as a student athlete and leader at Sonoma State University. Whether it's pursuing higher education or continuing my athletic career, I am thankful for the foundation that Vintage High and NVUSD have provided me. I would also like to acknowledge my family for their endless support, encouragement, and love throughout this journey. Without them, none of this would have been possible. I am extremely grateful for everyone who has been a part of my high school journey and supported me along the way. I am truly grateful for the experiences, the lessons, and the amazing people I've had the privilege to learn from at Vintage. Thank you. [applause] who has excelled in both his academics and his extracurricular activities. Ranked in the top 10% of his class, Javier has consistently taken rigorous courses, and this year he earned an AP Scholar Award. Outside the classroom, Javier is a soccer player for Vintage. His coaches have a high regard for him, and they have coached him for his four years at Vintage. This year he is our starting center back on the team, and he always exhibits nothing but the utmost respect for the game, his coaches, and his teammates. He is described as the strong, silent type of player who leads by example. He is always willing to step in anywhere for the better of the team, and according to his coaches, and here I quote, "One of his strengths on the field is utilizing his height and his big, beautiful curly hair to get in the air and head the ball." Coach's words. Javier is also a part of the peer support program at Vintage, and he is dedicated to this program, and he excels at creating a welcoming and inclusive environment for Crusher students. His teacher, Mrs. Merkner, describes him as a natural leader, role model, and has helped, he has helped younger students develop effective study and academic habits, inspiring them to reach their potential. His exceptional listening skills and genuine care for others were evident during an outreach visit to our new health classes, where he connected with a younger student over a simple game of soccer, fostering trust and engagement. We are extremely proud of Javier as a student, athlete, and a leader at Vintage High School, and he, we know he will continue to do great things after high school. Javier is playing a soccer game tonight at Memorial Stadium. We tried to find a way to make it work for him to come to the boardroom to receive this recognition, but Javier is committed to his teammates and his sport and didn't want to leave early, we can't argue with that. So we made a video message of Javier that we will play, and we congratulate him on his recognition, and also hope that things are going well at Memorial, and that they bring home a win tonight.
As Principal Hutchinson said, I can't be there today because I have a soccer game right now, but I want to thank Dr. Masetti and the board for acknowledging me as one of the Students of the Month, and I also want to thank my parents for always being there to support me throughout my journey, my teachers and Mr. and Mrs. Merkner for creating an environment in class that makes me want to keep learning new things, as well as my soccer coaches, Coach Javi and Coach Feliciano, for giving me an opportunity to play for the high school team and providing me with an experience that I'll never forget. During my time at Vintage, there are many things I enjoyed being involved in, such as our school's peer support program, which allowed me to help others within our school community, and one of the things that really got me interested in going through high school was math, and it was my math teachers who really sparked that interest for me. As I plan to study engineering in college after high school, I want to thank everyone who has helped me throughout my journey, and this award wouldn't have been possible without the support. Again, thank you to Dr. Masetti and the board for acknowledging me as the Student of the Month.
Congratulations. So you'll give Javier his plaque. Since we have a little extra time, does the Manley family want to come up and take a picture with Audrey and the staff that's here? Let's go, come on up, Crushers, let's go. Let's take a picture? Yeah, okay.
Okay. and Javier. Now we have Napa Valley Adult Education. I believe this, these presentations will be via Zoom. Will Zahid Vargas and Grant Dinsdale please present the Students of the Month for NVAE?
My name is Zahid Vargas, and I'm an instructor for Napa Tool Education. I am nominating Andrea Orozco for Adult Education Student of the Month because of her remarkable dedication to overcoming personal obstacles while actively engaging in her studies. She constantly demonstrates a positive attitude and inspires her three children with her commitment to achieving her education goals. Despite juggling a demanding work schedule and family responsibilities, Andrea always arrives prepared and on time to class, actively participating in discussions, and showing significant academic improvement since enrolling, recently achieving basic technology skills. Andrea started participating in S12 technology workshops for a year, and she has showed great confidence in the usage of a computer and navigation and NVUSD school digital platform to get involved in her children's education. Andrea is a dedicated student who is always on time and does not miss class. Andrea shows a strong understanding of the digital platforms being used by her children's school and NVUSD school district website, like for example, helping her son to login into his digital platform to finish schoolwork, also having access to Parent Square to receive school announcements and be able to communicate with her children's school teachers. She has been an excellent role model for her children since she is always learning how to support them in their academic school responsibility. It is my pleasure to introduce Andrea Orozco, congratulations.
Do we have Andrea Orozco on? Is she, can you hear us?
Yes, she's on. Andrea, ¿podría leer su discurso, por favor?
Sí. Hola, mi nombre es Andrea Orozco. Soy una orgullosa madre de tres hijos. Mi hijo José tiene 18 años y está en su último grado de preparatoria en Vintage High School. Mi hijo Alexis tiene 13 años, está en séptimo grado de Silverado Mirosco, y mi hija Aide está en tercer grado en la escuela MacPherson. Estoy muy agradecida por la oportunidad de hablar hoy, y quiero compartir cómo esta clase de computación me ha ayudado tanto en mi vida académica como personal. Este curso me ha permitido comprender mejor los métodos que las escuelas utilizan como Ares y Parent Square, lo cual me ha sido útil para apoyar en el aprendizaje de mis hijos. Ahora me siento más confiada en navegar con las herramientas y las técnicas que utilizan en sus clases. A nivel personal, esta clase ha sido de gran valor. He adquirido habilidades necesarias para escribir y enviar correos electrónicos, lo que me ha facilitado la comunicación con los maestros de mis hijos. Lo más importante es que estas habilidades me han permitido ayudar a mi hijo Alexis con autismo, con sus tareas y sus terapias, especialmente cuando trabajo en su planta de educación individualizada IEP. Quiero agradecer de todo corazón a la escuela para adultos del Valle de Napa, al maestro Zahid, por compartir sus conocimientos, su experiencia, y por su paciencia con nosotras a lo largo de este curso. También quiero, quiero agradecer al Centro de Recursos Familiales de la escuela MacPherson por su apoyo constante. Gracias nuevamente a todos por esta oportunidad y por ayudarme a seguir creciendo. Gracias.
Gracias, señora Orozco. I believe we have the interpreter prepared to read it in English?
Yes, we do.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Andrea Orozco, and I am a proud mother of three. My son José is 18 years old and is a senior at Vintage High. My son Alexis is 13 years old and is in, is a seventh grader at Middle, Silver, at Silverado Middle School, and my daughter Aide is a third grader at McPherson Elementary. I am very grateful for the opportunity to speak today, and I want to share how this computer class has helped me in both my academic and personal life. This course has given me a better understanding of the methods that schools use, such as Ares and Parent Square, which has been helpful in supporting my children's learning. I now feel more confident navigating the tools and techniques they use in their classes. On a personal level, this class has been of great value. I have acquired the skills necessary to write and send emails, which has made it easier for me to communicate with my children's teachers. Most importantly, this, these skills have allowed me to help my son Alexis, who has autism with his paperwork, homework, and therapies, especially when working on his individualized education plan, or IEP. I would like to extend my heartfelt thanks to the Napa Valley School, Adult School, and teacher Zahid for sharing his expertise and for his patience with us throughout the course. I would also like to thank the McPherson RFC for their constant support. Thank you all again for this opportunity and for helping me to continue to grow. Thank you.
Thank you so much, and congratulations to Ms. Orozco. And now the NVAE December Student of the Month, can we hear about Samuel Jamison, please?
Hi, I'm Grant Dinsdale. I'm the coordinator for the Secondary Education Program at Napa Valley Adult Education, and I'm very proud to introduce to you Samuel Jamison. Samuel is a very dedicated student. He began at the end of February of 2024, and he needed 110 credits to graduate, which is a lot. And with just over nine months and change, he earned those 110 credits and graduated this December. Samuel was always a gentleman in class, always, obviously, very hardworking. He finished basically what would take, in a regular high school, two years to earn that many credits, and he did it in just over nine months. All this while having a family and working a very, very busy, full-time job. So I'd like to say congratulations to Samuel.
Is Samuel here to say a few words? Or online to say a few words?
Yes, I'm ready whenever you're available.
Go ahead.
So first, I just want to say thank you all for being here. I just want to take a moment, and also thank you to the entire board of Napa Valley Adult Education. I was obviously blessed enough to finish the diploma within nine months within following a full-time job that would send me overseas, and just wanted to continue my career. So with that program, it was able to help me continue that career and keep going on for other generations in my family to continue the path of education. And for one, I just want to say thank you to all the staff, the board, and to all the teachers that took their time out of their day that we had a class, even though you're a little box on my Zoom class, letting us ask the endless amount of questions about credits and helping us push us to the next stage. I just want to say thank you all.
Thank you, and congratulations, Mr. Jamison. Oh, thank you. This brings us to public comment on non-agenda items. Do we do in-person first?
Yep.
Okay, so we do have one person here. Chris Benz is here for a public comment on non-agenda item. Welcome.
How's that? Greetings, Dr. Masetti and board members. My name is Chris Benz, and I'm speaking on behalf of Napa Climate Now, the local climate advocacy group, and 350 Bay Area Chapter. I'm following up on an email sent to Assistant Superintendent Manualla on January 6, and several phone messages I've left with his department with regard to a question we have about Measure B funds and HVAC upgrades. I haven't received a response, which is why I'm here tonight. First, I'd like to say that we're very happy that Measure B passed. The facilities upgrades are desperately needed, and the measure was very well put together. We also applaud NVUSD for committing to support climate actions with your Climate Change Action Resolution and the resolution supporting climate restoration. We are trying to learn if the HVAC upgrades that have been made and those that are planned under Measure B will use electric heat pump systems and not methane gas. Methane is considered a super pollutant and a major source of global warming, and we need to reduce its use. Installing heat pump technologies for the HVAC systems gives you, the district, the opportunity to walk your talk and reduce facility emissions. You will align with the City of Napa's 2040 General Plan, which calls for promoting efforts to reduce energy demand, reduce GHG emissions, and conserve resources through improved building design. You will also align with the upcoming Napa County Regional Climate Action and Adaptation Plan, which lists retrofits of existing residential and non-residential buildings as one of the top six measures to reduce emissions. With roof upgrades, the district has the opportunity to install surface treatments, for example, cool roofs that reduce the heat island effect of new development and support reduced energy use, and these are described in the 2040 City of Napa General Plan. So please let us know how you plan to proceed with these upgrades, and thank you for all you are doing. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Benz. The advantage of coming to the board meeting is Mr. Manualla is right there, and you can connect with him, and he will follow up. So thank you so much.
Okay, seeing no other non-agenda public comment in the boardroom, is there any public comment online, Ms. Green?
There is a public comment on non-agenda items.
And trustee Gonzalez-Morris, did we receive any public comment on non-agenda items via email at publiccomment@nvusd.org?
No public comment on non-agenda items were submitted via email at publiccomment@nvusd.org before 8:00 a.m. this morning.
Thank you very much. Okay, and now, following the agenda adjustment that we made, we will move to item J1A, which is recognition and presentation of proclamation honoring the American Canyon High School Football Team.
So we want to welcome, if the head coach, Coach Hudson, could come up, and Principal Karen Hatton, if they could make their way up to the front. So we have two items on the agenda tonight. We have the presentation of the proclamation, and then we also have the actual adoption of the proclamation. So during the presentation of the proclamation, it's going to provide the opportunity for me as the superintendent and the board to address the team, the family, the staff that's here, and of course, our head coach, Coach Hudson. I'll start off with my comments, and then I'll invite the board. We'll read the proclamation, and we'll bring everybody up for a photo. So I just want to start out by saying, congratulations to the American Canyon High School Wolves student athletes, Principal Karen Hatton, Coach Hudson, and the entire coaching staff, Athletic Director Melissa Schimer that I know is here tonight as well, and the ACHS staff and families on clinching the state championship, the first historic state championship here in Napa County. As you know, I was there to witness both the NorCal title game and the state championship game against Palmdale in Log Beach in Southern California. And as a proud spectator, your unwavering dedication, teamwork, and perseverance were so evident, and it all has led you to this remarkable achievement. I also want to recognize that while engaging in this rigorous schedule of athletic competition, which turned out to be a longer-than-usual season, students also had to balance their academics, service commitments, and other extracurricular activities. That balancing of time, energy, and pressure is just as important as the actual championship win. In fact, the skill of balancing your enriched careers as student athletes is providing you with lessons learned that will be with you throughout a lifetime. With that being said, each football game showcased your collective strength and determination, culminating in the well-deserved and historical victory here in Napa County and in the city of American Canyon. Your success not only brings pride to our school and our district, but also serves as an inspiration to the entire community beyond just the city of American Canyon, but throughout Napa County. May this triumph be a stepping stone to even greater accomplishments in your endeavors and lives. Well done, ACH Wolves. You are champions, and we are proud. So we want to go ahead and invite any of the student athletes on the team to come up here to the front. And before we read and present the proclamation, I think the boys can handle standing for a little while. I want to invite any of the board members.
Trustees, any comments here? Trustee Jankowicz, why don't you kick it off?
I need this. Congratulations to the American Canyon High School Football Team. Woo-hoo! Congratulations to coaches, families, Principal Hatton, and the entire community. What an accomplishment. So I want you to know I have great respect for this community. You brought great athletic pride to Napa Valley Unified School District. Congratulations to each and every one of you. Wolves seem to excel athletically, academically, visual performing arts. Principal Hatton, congratulations for all the good things that are happening at American Canyon High School. We could not be more proud of you. Well done.
Trustee Water?
Well, I really can't talk, Trustee Jankowicz, but I just want to tell you that I got home from California School Boards Association Conference, rushed home, pulled out my credit card, bought into some weird program that lets me watch athletic events all over the country, and sat there transfixed at your all's game. I mean, you were just killing it, and I was so excited. My husband comes in and says, wait, I thought you hated football. And I said, shut up, this is a great game. This is great, and I had so much fun. And I guess, you know, I'm a former English teacher. In fact, I used to work with your principal, and to work with her, and she was a wonderful teacher. And Coach, you just won my heart when you told American Canyon mayor, no, we're not going to have a parade because these kids have to study, you know, they got finals coming up. And I thought, God, what a guy. And I know, the kids look really thrilled, I can tell. And your coach, his pure joy, that speech he gave, saying, hear me out now, American Canyon's going to be a problem for years to come. I loved it. And I thought, gee, you know, this is, it's just, I just love seeing the esprit de corps. I love seeing the team work together. I can tell you all care about each other so much, and that's really what sports should be about. So thank you for this wonderful example.
And now, here from someone really close to the action, our second board member, trustee, student trustee Gray.
Coach Hudson, I want to say congratulations to the rest of the team. You guys all deserve it. I know you've put in tireless efforts, tireless efforts amount of time, giving up your sixth period to go to football practice, going to practice during the rain, playing in the rain, and winning. So just kidding, playing in the rainy, winning, that was definitely a game. I kind of put on like five different scarves to preserve my so-in, but it's okay. I just want to say congratulations, and thank you to Coach Hudson, especially for the cheerleaders for all of the support you've shown us, even though we've had our difficulties, but you have definitely been a rock for us, and I really appreciate you for that. So congratulations.
Other comments from trustees? Trustee Chu.
So, congratulations. As the only American Canyon resident on the board, I can truthfully say I am incredibly proud of this team, the school, the community, the families. I mean, I saw many of these, your young men grow up because they grew up with my children. So I also want to recognize their parents, some of them who are actually coaches of them when they were young in the junior roles program. So I wanted to also recognize, I know some of them are back there, kind of like in the background, so I wanted to give a shout out to them and just to, you know, say thank you for building our community and to show really what American Canyon is all about. So, Gold Wolves, I got my Wolf shirt on.
Coaches, come on up here, too. Come on, I'm so sorry.
And I'll just...
Coach Anderson's in the back. Come on up there.
Assistant coaches need to come up, too.
And I'll just, if there are not other comments from my fellow trustees, I can't really say it better than it said, so I'll just add my appreciation and my pride and joy. You've given our district and our community something really beautiful, a beautiful example of positivity and hard work and commitment and teamwork and strength and collaboration and cooperation and vision and manifesting that vision. So it's a beautiful thing, we're so proud of you, and as Dr. Masetti said, the balancing that we know you student athletes do every day to keep all the areas, all the plates spinning, all the balls in the air that you're juggling, so that just makes it all the more impressive. We're so proud of you, congratulations. Go Wolves.
So I know you like to speak, so I'm going to let you speak, because when you speak, when you speak, I get motivated. But I do want to read the proclamation into the record. So, whereas the American Canyon High School Football Team has demonstrated outstanding athletic excellence, perseverance, and teamwork throughout the season, and whereas the team, under the exemplary leadership of head coach Trevor Hudson and the dedicated coaching staff, has achieved the remarkable accomplishment of winning the CIF State 5A Championship for the 2024 football season, and whereas the players have exemplified the values of hard work, sportsmanship, and unity, serving as role models for their peers and inspiring the entire community, and for the first time, because of their unwavering commitment to these values, Napa County has a state champion team in high school football. And whereas the families, school staff, and supporters of American Canyon High School have played a vital role in encouraging and uplifting the team throughout their journey to victory, and whereas the Napa Valley Unified School District community wish to congratulate all those who were instrumental in the American Canyon High School Wolves Football Team's accomplishments, and whereas this historic achievement brings immense pride and honor to the community of American Canyon and the entire Napa Valley Unified School District, and reflects the spirit and determination of its community members, now therefore be it proclaimed, that the Napa Valley Unified School District Board of Education and the Superintendent's Office request that all citizens congratulate all the members of the American Canyon High School Wolves Football Team for their dedication, their good sportsmanship, team spirit, and athletic prowess for their outstanding feat as the CIF Division 5A State High School Champions, in witness whereof we have here on to set our hand and the seal of the Napa Valley Unified School District this 16th day of January 2025. Congratulations.
First off, I wanted to say thank you to the board for taking the time, Dr. Masetti, Principal Hatton, our community, everybody that's going on. I want to start by saying, you made a good point about them juggling things. One thing people think about the championships, they see the football, but this football team also won a Scholar Award because we maintain a 3.4 GPA for a varsity football team. That's in a 15-game season, we never let academics fall behind because we do preach the word student athlete. Next, I want to make sure we take the time to thank the coaching staff. Listen, these gentlemen are overworked and underpaid, but highly motivated. The hours that they put in, you know, everything says my name, but I don't do this alone, and I'm no fool to think I do this alone. I couldn't do this without the gentlemen that come and dedicate their time, Coach Anderson, Coach Scott, Coach KB, Coach Holmes, Coach Jesse, and there's more who couldn't make it this evening because we outworking and trying to make other things happen. So I want to make sure we take the time to congratulate our coaching staff. Up next, it doesn't happen without these families. This community of American Canyon has really rallied behind these guys, but these parents have had to deal with me for a long period of time. December's a long football season, and I ask and request a lot. So for these parents, I want to make sure that I say thank you, and if I don't say it enough, let me say thank you again, and just in case you didn't hear me in the back, thank you one more time. The dedication you give to supporting your children and their dreams and their aspirations is what really makes them the great young men that they're going to be once we do depart from American Canyon. So please, one more time for your families. And now, Ms. Chu, you said, you know, you were the only person living in American Canyon. I want you all to know we are steadily building. It's a beautiful community, so there's homes available for everybody. So you don't have to be jealous, you can move in. American Canyon, we got homes for everybody, so please, come on down. Thank you guys again for taking the time. It is truly an honor, and let's just stay in these good spirits because we're doing it again. So we'll be back at this one more time, so thank you.
Principal Hatton, did you want to add any comments of your own to congratulate this crew?
I can't follow this. You know, I told the boys at about 5 o'clock in the morning when they were on the bus, and half of them, I think, were already asleep on their pillows, that, you know, that, what did I say, a rising tide lifts all boats, and, what, do you remember this? And that these boys and this team and those families and these coaches have been our rising tide this year. And I cannot tell you, gentlemen, how impressed I've been with the way you conduct yourself on campus, the way that you conducted yourself down in Los Angeles. We got 100...
Come on up, get a picture.
Are you a senior, raise your hand.
Karen.
Three, one, two. One with you just looking at this camera right here, okay? One right here, right here. All eyes right here, one.
Yep. You must be so proud of them. I love that game. I had so much fun.
Just really quick, this is Wolves tradition, Coach Harris, come on. It's your birthday. Now, when he, don't sing it, it's his birthday, so he got to sing it to himself, that's how we roll, hold on. Ian and Coach Anderson, both of you.
Let's go.
Come on.
He left, oh, real good.
Come on, let's get it, we got a lot of business to take care of, come on.
Happy birthday to me. Happy birthday to me. Happy birthday to us. Happy birthday to me.
We're not leaving, buddy.
What's going on, these guys?
My speech. So first, I want to say thank you, it's a meme.
Michael, they muted you, you're muted.
Muted.
Oh, my gosh.
No, okay. Okay. Next up.
They must have been so happy.
J1B.
Bye, good night.
Summer? Oh, there she is. Okay. Okay, as we are transitioning to another sort of fun celebratory item, we will move to item J1B, and that's the recognition and presentation, presentation, excuse me, of service awards for Measure B Campaign, Supporting Safe and Modern Napa Schools. So, Dr. Masetti?
Yes, great, thank you so much. So we are so excited this evening to honor our three co-chairs for their leadership in the Measure B Campaign. I have some words prepared, but I'd like to reserve those for when I present the awards. I think it would be great, do you want to start out with trustee comments or would you like me to proceed first?
Sure. Are there trustee comments? We'll start with trustee comments, yeah. So trustee Hart?
I have to go before Robin because she says all the really nice, beautiful words. But I would like to thank all three of you, I know Summer, I, I actually know you, you have met before, but I don't know you as well, but man, every one of our 16,000 students owes you guys a gratitude of debt for your efforts in helping us getting this bond measure passed. We are also very grateful, as a parent of multiple kids in this, in this district, I know and you all know what kind of condition our schools are in and, and the kind of attention that they need. So from the bottom of my heart, thank you very much, your efforts are very much appreciated. I saw you guys on Facebook all the time, out there pounding the pavement, getting out and talking to people, calling into, you know, PTA meetings, giving that information, and it's been invaluable, and we passed, so thank you so much.
Thank you, trustee Hart. Any other words from trustees? Trustee Water?
Yes. I, I too appreciate, oh gosh, you have no idea how much I appreciate it. I mean, I have a, a three and a half month old grandson and I, I told, I ran into Dr. Nemco at a party over Christmas and said, well, I'm really happy because it means that my grandchild will enter a kindergarten that is not tumbling down around his ears. So purely, you know, that's, I guess, kind of self-serving, but I'm also thinking about our students who owe you so much. And I've joked that when we win by, it was, it was a close election, and hey, we knew it was going to be a close election, but when we win by such a narrow margin, you can say very sincerely to people, we couldn't have done it without you, but ladies, we really couldn't have done it without you. And you all brought different gifts to the, to, to, to the campaign. For example, you, Missy, are extremely analytical and you're really a cheapskate. You wanted to make sure that the, you wanted to make sure that the money was being spent well. Lisa, you are really, you're, you're really good at organizing, and Summer, you are good at keeping people's spirits up, you know, you are a little ray of sunshine. And I just found, I just, I thought that you all, your skill sets complemented each other perfectly, you were fun to work, work with. I haven't forgotten the future date at, at the Fink, and I think that, I'm just, I'm so happy about it, it's just, this, this victory has really made up for a lot of things, you know, that have gone kind of sideways, and people were walking up afterwards, you know, when we were waiting, you know, we were in that sort of no man's land, oh, it could go this way or it could go that way, but I, I just kept thinking, we're going to do it, we're going to do it, because, you know, we had you three heading up the effort, and I thought, with them, we just can't fail, we're going to do it. So thank you.
Simone, Lisa, Summer, thank you for your hard work, your leadership, exceptional service to our students, NVUSD, and really our greater Napa community. I have great appreciation and gratitude for the time and effort you put into this work. You understood the big picture, you educated our community, you well articulated the funding complexities of school finance and facilities funding in a manner that people could comprehend. You defined need and created the conditions for this bond measure to pass. I hope you feel a great deal of pride and accomplishment. A chapter in the book of NVUSD is now titled, How Three Intelligent, Dedicated and Committed Women Helped Improve the Educational Landscape for Napa Valley Unified School District. Your efforts will forever be entwined in the NVUSD legacy, and I thank you very, very much.
Hello. I think one of the reflections that I'm having is that I, I got a chance to work alongside Simone as we were working on an endorsement, but I think that's the beauty of this community is that sometimes you don't get to meet the person directly, you don't get to work with them directly, but you know that as what we know from today and winning and all that, that you are grateful for the people who are out there looking out for others. And I think that's, to me, what you symbolize is that your vision of not just for probably your own family, grandchildren and so on, but it goes beyond that, and I think that's what makes this really beautiful is to have three individuals who stepped up to the role, not easy, to a challenge that probably was really well described to you as to what would happen, and yet you decided to go ahead and move forward with that. That is incredible to me, and I really, on behalf of all of our kiddos, I've been on the seat for eight years now, and it goes beyond what happened this year, it's beyond that, and what you have contributed to that work will go beyond eight years, 10 years, 20 years, and just know that you have contributed to that history, and I thank each and every one of you for what you have done. Thank you so much.
I just want to say, from American Canyon community, we're so grateful that parents like you guys stepped up to do the wonderful, amazing job that you did. The entire American Canyon community was actually behind you in saying that we really would like to have this pass in Napa. We, it was really hard because we couldn't vote, you know, for your bond, but we were really 100% behind you, I think. It showed in the, in the D-LAC leadership, two of whom were from American Canyon, that really stepped up to, to try to really bring that over also to you, and so really grateful for all your efforts because, guess what, we're going to have a, we're going to have beautiful schools everywhere now. So, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you, and I'll just, I'll just add that we're so grateful for your example of commitment to the community and your tenacity in being shown a really inequitable and unfair situation with the facilities and the, the bind that public school districts are in that I think you quickly came to understand as you were getting drawn in to, to, to help us with this effort. And I, I really got the sense, even though I wasn't able to be as, as deeply involved in the campaign, but, or the, you know, the community connections, but that each of you leveraged your skills and your relationships in the community, but, but the sense that I got as I was hearing was this sort of, you, you leveraged this sense of kind of outrage that it shouldn't be this way, and you were going to put everything in it that you could spare for us and for our kids to try to change that, and you did it, and that example, that model for our community, for our kids, for other community activists who see a wrong that they, that they think, gosh, this is not right, and I wonder if some people working together could really impact a change here, and the results were crazy-making and the weight was crazy-making, and there's something highly satisfying that the, in a way, for me, that the margin was so close the other way. We all were walking around on air, once the results were, you know, we were told it wasn't going to shift another way, so we, we owe you a debt of gratitude. Thank you, thank you for everything, all of the untold hours, the untold steps and miles, walking in neighborhoods, reaching out, conversations with anyone that you could see. You did it, you got us across the line, and we couldn't have done it without you, thank you so much.
Did you want to say anything? Well, I want to thank the board, and I think it's so appropriate that we started with their comments and their sense of gratitude, because the board was the entity, the governance team that put the resolution back in June in order to move Measure B forward. And I have to say that one of the reasons that I was willing, despite knowing that it was going to be a razor-thin margin, I didn't think it was going to be that close, but, but it was that close, was the trifecta of these three bond co-chairs, that Measure B co-chairs that I'm about to introduce to the community. I, in no way would have had the confidence to bring forward the staff recommendation to pursue Measure B for safe and modern Napa schools without knowing that I had the three of you to lead that effort in the community, and you did an extraordinary job. So who are our three Measure B bond co-chairs? Summer Gilgallen, who is a vintage high school parent, Lisa Lombardi from Browns Valley, and Simone Katz O'Neil, also a Browns Valley parent. Thank you so much for serving as the co-chairs of the Measure B Safe and Modern Napa Schools Committee. I've been an educational leader, serving at the district level for over 15 years, and during this time, I've had the opportunity to closely observe and collaborate with several school bond campaign committees across various communities and contexts. With that being said, I can wholeheartedly confirm that the grassroots, community-driven campaign you all organized and implemented independently in environment, in an environment where it is notably challenging to pass tax measures was one of the best I've seen. It has been an absolute privilege to work with all of you. The three of you were energetic, proactive, organized, passionate, hardworking and diligent. It was a formula for success. But your campaign leadership superpower was the ability to stay focused on the students, the children in Napa, in the Napa community, and I've never seen focus like it. You did an amazing job of tapping into the energy of others who were also focused on ensuring that Napa students had access to modern and safe facilities, and when confronted with the natural resistance that emerges, you remained respectful of the varying opinions while gently redirecting community members towards the moral imperative of ensuring that students had the opportunity to learn, to be taught and to grow at safe and modern elementary, middle and high school campuses. Your leadership and efforts as parent volunteers, this is all a volunteer effort, in successfully passing Measure B will have impacts and benefits for years to come, well beyond when your own children graduate from the system, even with, it's Finn, right? Even with Finn only being in his elementary years, Simone and Mr. O'Neil. The word that comes to mind, if I were to bring it to one word, when I think about the Measure B campaign and your campaign leadership, it was really simple, it's integrity. This integrity led to a historic endorsement list of almost every leader that impacts the city of Napa at the national, state and local level. 150 public endorsements, to be exact. Your integrity led to the unprecedented confidence and engagement of parent-teacher organizations across the majority of our Napa schools. The integrity led to the local media supporting the measure. Your integrity led to turning around previously resistant voters, rendering us the additional almost 200 or so more votes that we needed to win and not repeat the loss experienced in 2022. You did this, the three of you. The integrity that you demonstrated and cultivated across the community during the campaign months will continue, and I promise that. As my staff and I are deeply committed to successfully implementing the facilities modernization plan that you.
And during this time, I've had the opportunity to closely observe and collaborate with several school bond campaign committees across various communities and contexts. With that being said, I can wholeheartedly confirm that the grassroots, community-driven campaign you all organized and implemented independently in environment, in an environment where it is notably challenging to pass tax measures was one of the best I've seen. It has been an absolute privilege to work with all of you. The three of you were energetic, proactive, organized, passionate, hardworking, and diligent. It was a formula for success. But your campaign leadership superpower was the ability to stay focused on the students, the children in Napa commu, in the Napa community, and I've never seen focus like it. You did an amazing job of tapping into the energy of others who were also focused on ensuring that Napa students had access to modern and safe facilities. And when confronted with the natural resistance that emerges, you remained respectful of the varying opinions while gently redirecting community members towards the moral imperative of ensuring that students had the opportunity to learn, to be taught, and to grow at safe and modern elementary, middle, and high school campuses. Your leadership and efforts as parent volunteers, this is all a volunteer effort, in successfully passing Measure B will have impacts and benefits for years to come, well beyond when your own children graduate from the system, even with, it's Finn, right? Even with Finn only being in his elementary years, Simone and Mr. O'Neil. The word that comes to mind, if I were to bring it to one word, when I think about the Measure B campaign and your campaign leadership, it was really simple. It's integrity. This integrity led to a historic endorsement list of almost every leader that impacts the city of Napa at the national, state, and local level. 150 public endorsements, to be exact. Your integrity led to the unprecedented confidence and engagement of parent-teacher organizations across the majority of our Napa schools. The integrity led to the local media supporting the measure. Your integrity led to turning around previously resistant voters, rendering us the additional almost 200 or so more votes that we needed to win and not repeat the loss experienced in 2022. You did this, the three of you. The integrity that you demonstrated and cultivated across the community during the campaign months will continue, and I promise that. As my staff and I are deeply committed to successfully implementing the facilities modernization plan that you promoted and stood behind, so that the community experiences a bond program that improves the majority of schools in Napa, in the Napa area, not just some schools, by modernizing sites for which it has been long overdue. We will hold ourselves accountable to this commitment and invite the community to also ensure that we deliver on the promise of Measure B that you were so willing to speak to and champion with neighbors, friends, families, other parents. Thank you. And it has truly been a pleasure and honor and an absolute gift working with the three of you from the la, from the time last year where I met you all, where you really, in many ways, approached me with an interest in getting the job done for the kids in the Napa community. Thank you so much. So now I have the pleasure of presenting each of you our very special Leadership Service Award. I'll come up to the podium to do that. And I also just want to take a moment to thank Mr. Lombardi, Mr. O'Neil, and Mr. Gilgallen, who I know it's been probably a difficult few months, and supporting our, what we like to, the, the name of endearment is the Three Bond Moms. So, thank you for supporting our NVUSD Measure B Bond Moms. All right, I'll come up to the podium now. All right. So please join me in a big round of applause. It reads like this, "The Distinguished Service Award in Recognition and Appreciation for Her Exemplary Leadership and Dedication to the Students, Families, and Employees in NVUSD, to Ms. Lisa Lombardi, Measure B Safe and Modern Napa Schools, Election 2024 Campaign Co-Chair." Lisa, come on up.
I'll bring you all. Yeah, just stand on, okay, stand on.
You're doing great, we're doing great. All right, so next again, Distinguished Service Award in Recognition and Appreciation for Her Exemplary Leadership and Dedication to the Students, Families, and Employees in NVUSD, Ms. Simone Katz O'Neil, Measure B Safe and Modern Napa Schools, Election 2024 Campaign Co-Chair. Simone, come on up. And last, but certainly not least, that was not gracious, but good glass here. Measure B quality glass. Distinguished Service Award in Recognition and Appreciation for Her Exemplary Leadership and Dedication to the Students, Families, and Employees in NVUSD, Summer Gilgallen, Measure B Safe and Modern Napa Schools, Election 2024 Campaign Co-Chair. Summer, please come on up. All right, so I want to invite the co-chairs, if they want to come, and address the school board.
Well, we're a little bit overwhelmed and feel like it's a hard act to follow after the American Canyon High School champions. I don't think this is quite as exciting as their win, but it's, but it's, but it's, but it's still very exciting. We just want to say a few quick comments, and this is all unplanned because we really didn't know how this was gonna play out. So if we repeat ourselves, we apologize in advance. We just wanted to thank the board and Dr. Mousseti. We also wanted to thank the community, all of the volunteers, all the parent volunteers and non-parent volunteers, all of the endorsers who came out and supported Measure B. And I do want to make one correction to Dr. Mousseti. I believe we did have all city and county leaders that were incoming support us on this Measure B, and that was really important for us. I will also say, I think we are the first potentially school bond campaign that had three co-chairs. And when we were considering taking this on, we were all very hesitant leaders, and we basically said we would not do it without the three of us all doing it together. Collectively, we thought it was possible, but individually, we thought it was impossible. And when we asked our school bond consultant whether or not it was possible, and I asked, is it legal to have three co-chairs? He said, well, it's never been done before. And I said, is it legal? He said, it's not illegal. And so I said, that means we are having three co-chairs.
Are you gonna tell everyone you're a lawyer?
I have not mentioned that, but it, but, but it was important that we all have that role together, and we are just delighted for the kids in the NVUSD in Napa. So thank you so much. I'll pass it on to Summer and Lisa.
Thank you so much for this recognition. It's not needed, but we appreciate it very much. And we said all along that this was absolutely for the kids, and that was the campaign and exactly what we wanted the community to understand why we were, the three of us took this on. We were very passionate about doing this for the kids and for the teachers and staff at NVUSD. And so we are so thrilled and proud that, that there will be some improvements, much needed improvements to our aging facilities, and we're just really excited to see what's gonna come for this district in the coming years. And I'm grateful really for the volunteer opportunity and to work with such an amazing group of, of people, knowledgeable and really dedicated people. Our team, it was, it was absolutely a team effort, the group of people, many of you were part of that. And I'm just grateful for the experience. I learned so much, and I have so much gratitude for the entire experience, and thank you so much. And that's it, thank you. I'll pass it on.
I just, I'm the crier, so. I can't, I literally can't do these things without crying. I just want to thank all of you for what you do and what you've been doing for us for years, for the kids, for your tireless efforts. I feel weird getting thanked for this, because it was a privilege to get to do it, and I'm just, the friendships that I made, the people I got to meet, it's just been the best experience. And the fact that it now plays forward to the kids, and it's for them, and our teachers, and for you guys, and you all deserve it so much, and I'm just, I'm thrilled for all of you. I know I'm crying, but I'm thrilled. And that's all, thank you.
All right, we're gonna take some, we're, oops, we're gonna take some pictures. Yeah, we need a photo. And we'll do one with husbands, too.
Well, I don't need to take any, if he's taking the good ones.
Come on in, come on in. Yeah, we'll definitely get you copies of these.
One, two, three. One more. All right, one, two, three.
Good night, get some rest. I know you had a long day. Field trip was good?
Okay, this seems like a natural time for us to just take, we're gonna take a five-minute stretch break, and thank you very much, we'll be right back. Okay, we are now back from our break and ready to move on with our agenda, having had our celebratory time. We're now on the, back in the agenda at H Reports, H1 Board of Education and Student Board Representative. Student Board Representative Grayden, would you like to start us off?
Of course, so I first want to start off by saying Happy New Year, it's 2025, also my graduation year. I hope everyone had a wonderful and restful break, I know I did. This week, I have started back at track conditioning, which has had me extremely tired and very sore. Today, we did a lot of running, which had me struggling to walk up the stairs. So I apologize, I apologize if I'm a little low-energy tonight. It's been a lot to get back into shape, however, I am extremely excited for the upcoming triple jump season, and hopefully I can break our school record, I believe it's 35 feet. Currently, I'm at 30 within my first season, which was last year, so I'm looking forward to that. At school, we have begun to ease back into our normal routines. This semester, I have officially started my government class, which I have been waiting for since my junior year. You can ask anybody who knows me, all I've talked about is government since the very start. Within these first couple of days, I have learned so much, beginning with the state of nature and the question, are, are humans inherently benevolent or malevolent? I am extremely excited about it because I want to major in political science. My minor is currently undecided, maybe philosophy, maybe, and maybe marketing as well. We're also continuing with our student focus groups at school to check in with our student body to see how we can improve as a school. At Vintage, they're getting back into the swing of things as well, and have a winter sports rally and club events coming up soon. To all of my seniors, our last semester of high school is finally upon us, so make sure you take the time to enjoy your last ride. High school is a time where we basically have no responsibilities before life gets real, so I really just hope everyone enjoys it. And lastly, and most importantly, my heart goes out to all of those affected by the Southern California wildfires. As a school community, we are working out a way to respond and aid in a targeted and strategic way to help those affected. We have a committee put in place to focus on how we can help, and have also given our clubs a chance to get, be involved as well. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Student Trustee Grayden. Trustee Water.
Thank you. Well, I took advantage of the, of the holiday break, and however, I have been doing a lot of community engagement, answering tons of emails. On the 14th, I had my check-in with Dr. Mousseti, where I told you everything that I thought that we should be doing, and, yes. And then yesterday, I attended a Zoom meeting with Dr. Mousseti and with Director Susan Miller, and it's, and it was about open enrollment and extremely, extremely illuminating, and I think the public would be fascinated if we did a presentation on it at the, at a school board meeting. And President, President Reiser was there as well. And here I am right now with you all, and I couldn't be happier. And that concludes my report.
Thank you so much. Oh, I turned it off, sorry. Trustee Martin.
Hi, thank you, President Reiser. My report is six minutes and 36 seconds long. I hope that's okay. So on December 12th, I visited the IT department to fix my mat book, and I'd like to thank Jen for taking the time to sit with me for 30 minutes to troubleshoot my password. And I just want to note, it's really wonderful that teachers have a resource like a technology helpline, like a technology helpline to help them use, troubleshoot when you have 30 students waiting for you, you know, that's, I just think that's a wonderful asset for teachers to have at the school. On December 14th, I attended the Vintage High Choir Concert. I try to go to this concert every winter, ever since I was covering it for, when I was a theater critic for the Napa Valley Register. It's, I'm always impressed by how Mark Teeters and Eliza Mendelai can get usually self-conscious teenagers to have the courage to sing their hearts out so beautifully in front of the community. It was, it's always a magical night. December 16th, I had knee surgery. On December 18th, I attended a political climate legal seminar where I got to see Dr. Mousseti speak, and that's always fun. On December 19th, I attended the organizational board meeting, and I would like to thank the board for the warm reception I received during this meeting. President Reiser, the apricot cookies were my favorite. And I was very saddened to know, Trustee Hart, that puppies do not attend every board meeting. So, the day after that, I wore my NVUSD fleece to breakfast at the Black Bear Diner, and a teacher, I think her name's Miss Rosa Linda, she teaches, she asked me how I was associated with the district, and I told her I was recently elected to the school board, and I asked her what she does, and she says she taught, she teaches world history in Spanish. And I was like, that is awesome, because one of my favorite, many favorite programs, but I really appreciate the certificate of biliteracy or being able to have a biliterate education starting in TK and ending at Napa High School, I think that's, it's amazing. So we bonded over that. On January 6th, I attended an open enrollment tutorial, which, with Susan Miller, which explained to me how enrollment works, and it was also very clear that Dr. Mousseti's early, why, it's funny, because I was talking to a friend of mine who had a kid in NVUSD before 2018, and she, she said, enrolling your kid in a school was a nightmare because you like had to make friends with a person at the school you wanted to enroll to, and it was all on paper and stuff like that. And so it was, it's, it's really amazing that this was such a brilliant decision to centralize enrollment, and it's now, now that the enrollment is centralized, you can start tracking how students move through the district. And when you start tracking all of that, then it gives you data that you can make really interesting decisions. And we, I don't know if, I, we want to talk about the decision, oh, okay, well, okay, yeah, I think so, but it was, it, sorry. Then on January 7th, I had a school finance tutorial with Dr. Mousseti, and I want to thank Rob Anguilla for an amazing explanation of the very complicated way that schools are financed. I have a lot to learn. On January 14th, I attended the County Office of Education Board Meeting. Tonight, I was invited by Ms. Alma Gonzalez to prepare for the American Canyon High School Academic Decathlon Team with their interview and speech competition. Academic Decathlon was a central part of my high school experience. I medaled in super quiz, interview, and arts. And so when I got this invitation, I was like, and then I looked at my schedule and like, I have to be here. So, so I'm not able to be here tonight, but I told her I will be there on January 27th. So I'm, I'm very much looking forward to that. I would like to make a special shout-out to the angel that is Vera Morales, who is perhaps the most organized executive assistant I've ever worked with. Vera, thank you so much for keeping me organized and informed. It's such a pleasure and a relief to know that you are watching everything. Lastly, I met with Julie Prezzi and Marie McMora to sign papers for my employment within NVUSD, and I would like to thank them for how prepared they were with an enormous amount of disparate documents. So, in the process of doing all of this, I have hobbled on my crutches from the parking lot to Dr. Mousseti's office, back and forth along that hall many, many times, and I've encountered many people. So every time, within the past few months, I have hobbled on my crutches, the people that I have passed have always been smiling. They acknowledge me, I assume, without knowing who I am, with cheerfulness and warmth. One time, I was reading the core value sign next to the ladies restroom, and a woman who was going to the restroom was so happy, she said, hi, how are you, to me. And I said, I'm great. And she was, then she went into the restroom, and, you know, so another time, and this, I nearly cried, another time, when I walked into the hallway, I saw two people hugging, and as I walked up to them, I heard one say, I can always count on you. I've never been a part of an organization where people treated each other with such kindness, warmth, and respect. When, and it's kind of funny, when Julie and Marie and I were sitting there, we needed stickers, and Julie said, well, I'll send Marie to do it. And Julie's retired, and she's worked here for a long time, and she was coming back to train. And Julie said, well, I'm going to send Marie to do that, because if I have to go back, I'm going to have to talk to too many people and give too many hugs. And then she said, we're a family here. There is some kind of magic happening at NVUSD. It's not an accident that morale is so high and that people enjoy working here so much. I know from experience that energy like this starts at the top with this board and Dr. Masetti. Everyone seems to have what they need to do their jobs well. It's really impressive. I can feel the enthusiasm, competence, and warmth of everyone I meet. It's amazing and makes me feel enormous amount of gratitude and humility for my new position, to be a part of something so positive. I hope that my small contribution will be just as positive. It's an honor and privilege to be here.
Thank you, Trustee Martin. Trustee Jankowicz?
My heart goes out to Los Angeles and to all those impacted by the fires. The severity is unimaginable, difficult to segue. I hope everyone had a restful, rejuvenating, and joyful holiday, and I hope everyone has a happy and productive new year. I attended and thoroughly enjoyed the Deck the Hall's Winter Celebration. A warm thank you to all the divisions that contributed to the event, to Dana Page and her team for all the hard work and thoughtful touches, and a special shout out to my Wheel of Fortune spin. I'd like to express gratitude also to the tech department. On the 23rd of December, Nikki assisted me with some tech challenges I was experiencing. Their willingness to accommodate the request and seamlessly address the issue was very appreciated. We have an excellent tech department. I attended an open enrollment and demographics session. Director Miller thoughtfully addressed all issues with a data-driven presentation. I want to thank our board and our Northern California districts for nominating me for a seat on the Board of Directors for the California School Board Association. This was made possible by the previous hard work of David T. Gracia. I received a call from an incoming board president from a nearby district motivated by the AEC presentation on governance by Dr. Masetti. It was a very productive call. I shared our governance handbook, trustee responsibilities and expectation guidelines, and highlighted our CSBA governance training. I had a meeting with the business office regarding facilities used, community need, want, and how to approach community input. Thank you, Marie. I attended via Zoom CSBA's 2025 Governor's Budget Proposal Breakdown. I had a productive Zoom meeting with our new trustee, Mr. Martin, reviewing the board agenda process. I attended via Zoom the NCOE board meeting, and I invited our new CSBA Pacer, Carrie Castro, to visit Napa and our board. She will be here on the 21st. I will keep you posted, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, Trustee Jankowicz. Trustee Hart?
All right. Good evening. So way back in December, the last time we met, on the 19th and 20th, I started my Masters in Governance classes that are put on by the California School Boards Association. Those two days, the topics we covered were community relations and advocacy. Also, on the 19th, I did attend also the Deck the Hall's Holiday Gathering here at the district office, which was great and always a good time. There's very lively decorations and fun having all over the place. So it was great to see that happening. On January 6th, I attended along with our new trustee, Martin, the special session on open enrollment and demographics, which was, again, very eye-opening and very thorough. So thank you for, to Ms. Miller for putting that together. On January 9th through the 11th, I attended a three full days of Masters in Governance classes put on by the CSBA. Topics covered on those days included foundations of effective governance, setting direction, student learning and achievement, policy and judicial review, and an entire day on finance. So now, Rob, I can understand maybe like a tenth of a percentage of what you're doing over there. So that's good. I also learned that Dr. Masetti is somewhat well-known in our community and had been spoken of highly by several of the folks that were there in attendance, including the new superintendent, Cirrus, who had a phone call with you scheduled for this week, and she was excited to pick your brain on whatever topic was coming up. Yesterday, I got to go back to Napa High for the first time in 30 years, and I think the same paint is on the wall. I spent about an hour with Dr. Ainsworth. I took a look at the Wellness Center, and I had the opportunity to sit in on an ethnic studies class taught by Rosalinda Hurtado, who is also one of the ESA specialists there, and teaches the same class in Spanish to the DLI students. It was great to see. We had a nice little conversation. The kids were working on a project, so she had a few minutes to actually speak with us and answer some questions. We talked about how ethnic studies was going, what her impressions of it were, what some of the modifications that they found were necessary as they start to roll it out into this first year of implementation now after the pilot year. I did notice that the book that we chose in English is like this thick, and then the Spanish version's like this thick, like teeny tiny. So maybe there's some opportunity there for us to get a little bit more robust in Spanish for our DLI students. But it was very exciting to see, the staff is excited for it, the kids are engaged, they're participating, they're asking a lot of questions, and they're getting exposure to things that they would have not had previously. So I think it's really great. So I'm very appreciative of having that opportunity, and I'm looking forward to seeing what our bond dollars can do to help improve the facilities there at Napa High. I think there's a good story to be told, and I think it sometimes gets overcast by other things going on. But every teacher that I talked to, every classroom that I went into was great. You know, kids were engaged, everything was moving smoothly, and the teachers were happy and excited to be there. So that was really awesome for me to see. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Trustee Gonzalez-Morris?
Yeah, I also want to add to the Happy New Year feel to it, although 16 days in, it feels like already a lot. Reminds me and makes me reflect that we've have gone, we've been through a lot as a community. We feel, I think all of us here, a lot of empathy with what's happening in Los Angeles. Just the thought of hearing of a school burning down has, everything has a significance with that. But when you hear that piece, you're just, I can't imagine the meetings and conversations that are happening there. And, but as I hear Student Board Rep Grayden talk about senior year, it really, as I was looking up to the photos of the Students of the Month, and you're starting to see the senior pictures more and more pop up, got a text from my niece saying, April 5th is prom day for Napa High. That's not the day of, you know, your baby shower. And I was like, no, can't be, I guess. So it's a different day. So just the excitement around that, and just really excited for all of you seniors, also realizing that life is happening, whether you like it or not. And we just are working very hard to make sure that you are set up as much as possible when you're in our campuses to that success. So we're looking forward to continuing that hard work. I really appreciate kind of feeling like the cycle of things starting. One of my first duties as clerk was to submit the nomination for Trustee Jankowicz for her, the opening of the CSBA Delegate Assembly. So I was really glad to do that during my break. I didn't mind that at all. Really easy form. So I was like, check, check, check. And just even reporting today was felt like riding a bicycle. So kind of feel like I've done the loop. Speaking of track, I've done my loop. And so it just, it feels really good. It feels really good. And, you know, we're walking into the year with a big win after the bond. So it just, let's keep looking into that future with that positive mindset. On January 8th, just like many of the trustees here, we are doing our due diligence and homework and understanding the challenges, or just being informed of what occurs day-to-day in our school districts, such as open enrollment and the demographics study around that. So just really appreciated Susan Miller taking us through that education piece of it and answering our questions. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Chu?
So I ended 2024 by not only celebrating the ACHS football championship game on the 14th, but I was actually chaperoning the ACHS Academic Decathlon team in their first competition at Sac State, where they brought home many, many awards. So go Wolves academically this time. And then that, the week, a few days later, on the 17th, I attended the ACHS Winter Concert, along with a few of my fellow trustees here. And thank you to Mr. Jamie Butler for inviting us. It is always a fabulous time. And I, you think that you go every year, and you would think that maybe it's similar. No, he actually changes it up, and it is always fabulous and surprising. And then I started this year by having a check-in with Dr. Masetti on the 6th, and then I also attended the Open Enrollment and Demographics Report Meeting with Trustees Gonzalez-Morris and Trustee Jankowicz. Thank you to Director Susan Miller. And I just wanted to say good luck to all the students for this coming half-year and about to, you know, launch off to the new semester. So good luck. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Gosh, it seems like such a long time ago, but last year, I did, along with some fellow trustees, attend the American Canyon High School Winter Choir Concert. It's always a wonderful time. One thing I'll point out that blew me away was it was a full-length concert, more than an hour and a half, and Mr. Butler said, oh, this is half of the repertoire, and last night's concert was the other half. So I thought, wow, these kids are learning a ton of music. That is really impressive. And the show is always an amazing time. And also the NVUSD Deck the Hall's Holiday Party on the 19th is a really lovely gathering. I did also, along with Trustee Martin, attend the webinar that Dr. Masetti participated in, sort of orienting people to this changing political climate and what might be coming, and the implications for school boards and school districts. Also had, I participated in the Budget and Finance Learning Session as part of supporting Trustee Martin's onboarding with Assistant Superintendent Anguilla and Superintendent Masetti. Dr. Masetti and I had our one-on-one president's meeting this week, and then I also joined Trustee Water in our version of the learning session with Director Miller around open enrollment and demographics. And I think it's worth noting that, you know, Trustee Gonzalez-Morris pointed out, you know, we're always learning and having the opportunity because of the structure and the collaborative nature of the work of the trustees and Dr. Masetti. And there's often, it's in response to things coming from the community. And so we had people coming to the mic really concerned about the sports programs, and we were, you know, engaging in ongoing community engagement via email with people concerned about the impact of declining enrollment and open enrollment on school programming. And so I just think it's important for the community to know that, that if you come to public comment, and we can't, we aren't by nature of the structure of the meeting and the protocols, it's not responding to your question and getting into a conversation there. But coming to public comment and raising issues of concern often will result in something like now, all of the trustees have had a learning session, 90 minutes, two hours, dedicated to really diving in and making sure we understand the information, the data, the concerns of the community, what's happening at the site level. So I just think that I really value that about the way things work in this organization. And that concludes my report. Oh, I will say thank you to Student Trustee Grayden for your shout out about the students down in LA. My life got a little turned upside down, because I have my own UCLA student and two buddies, two bonus daughters with me for the last eight days, escaping the smoke and the fire danger there. So luckily, it looks like they're going back Saturday, and that the air is clearing enough, and that the fires are under control. But we certainly know and empathize and know that feeling of wanting to be out of the smoke and in a safe place. So our thoughts continue to be statewide with our fellow Californians. And this concludes my report. Dr. Masetti? Oh, I'm so sorry. This brings us to the Board H2A, Special Education Community Advisory Committee.
We have not yet met.
Okay. H2B, City of American Canyon Liaison?
We have not met.
H2C, City of Napa Liaison Representatives?
We have not met.
Okay. And H2D, Town of Yountville?
We have not yet met.
Okay. And now that brings us to H3, Superintendent Executive Staff, Dr. Masetti.
Great. Thank you, President Reiser. You're doing a great job here in your first meeting. So good evening, NVUSD trustees, staff, and community. My superintendent report tonight is short, as I've shared quite a bit of commentary for our special presentation items on tonight's agenda. I hope everyone had a restful, joyful holiday break. I want to just welcome back all of our students, families, and staff back to school here in the new year. We're excited about 2025 in the Napa Valley Unified School District and all the great work I know that we will accomplish in service to our students. So just first and briefly, I'd like to recognize and thank the ongoing support of the Napa Valley Community Foundation, who provided a grant of $1,000 from the Freed Family Fund to support environmental science and gardening programs across the district. They continue to provide consistent and ongoing financial resources throughout the years at many of our school sites. We appreciate the continuous generosity. I also want to follow your lead student trustee, Grayden, and take a moment and send positive thoughts to all of the educators working in Southern California, and all of the students, staff, and families in schools that have been impacted by the fires in Los Angeles County. I'm originally from Los Angeles, born and raised there, and I still have immediate and extended family living there. Here in NVUSD, we all know too well how the devastation of a natural disaster can impact the entire community, and how the educational lives of students can be completely disrupted. I've touched base with superintendents and educational leaders in Southern California who are navigating the impacts of the fires, and they are working around the clock right now. Many of them are working in overdrive while also having to navigate the personal impacts they may be experiencing as well. So I really do just want to wish them good luck. I want to wish them safety, strength, hope, and courage in the recovery journey, even though we know it will be long and slow. So with that, I'm going to turn it to my assistant superintendents, the executive team. We'll start out with Assistant Superintendent Dana Page, who oversees the Human Resources Division.
Thank you. Good evening, President Reiser, Board of Trustees, Student Board Member Grayden, and Dr. Masetti. I would like to officially welcome students, teachers in sight, back from break. It was a smooth reentry, and it's nice to have the second part of the school year launched. HR has jumped right into staffing for the '25-'26 school year. Principals are working with projected enrollment numbers to determine how many classroom teachers they will need in particular subject areas. We're reviewing the performance of our probationary teachers to ensure they are high-quality and a great fit for NVUSD before they become permanent, and we are starting to post jobs for next year in earnest. Effective January 1st, 2025, a new law came into effect intended to prevent any teacher applicants who have had egregious misconduct in previous districts from moving to another district. It requires additional steps in our current reference-checking process, and prior to the break, HR staff got up to speed on the new laws and put procedures in place to implement the new measures. If you haven't had a chance to explore the NVUSD website lately, I'd like to encourage you to go to Working for NVUSD. From the homepage, click the blue menu box in the top-right corner. You will find a variety of resources for current and prospective employees, including our Staff in the Spotlight page. While there, take a moment to learn about some of our amazing employees. Newly featured are Jennifer Stroman. Jennifer Stroman has been here since 2008, running the Gateway Program at Silverado Middle School. She's well-known for her ability to meet the unique needs of students, as well as her role in maintaining the beautiful garden at Silverado. Nicole Beederman from Vintage High School is also featured. Nicole- Nicole works in the front office as the attendance secretary. Every day of the last nine years Nicole has been with us, she comes to work excited and ready to serve parents, students and the staff at VHS. She is a graduate of NVUSD herself and currently has one child at Vintage and another recent grad. Finally, Maritza Greenwell is an independence facilitator at Snow Elementary. She works closely with students, helping them focus in lessons and navigate through their day positively. She is driven by helping each student reach their full potential and her dedication shines through her connections with students. After checking out staff in the spotlight, you can click the next tab to get more information about our upcoming Employees of the Year celebration, including the link to the NVUSD YouTube channel where you can watch the event through live streaming. We hope to also fill Evans Auditorium with fans of our nominees for an evening of recognition and celebration. The program starts at 5:30 on Tuesday, January 28th, and we hope to see you there. Thank you. This concludes my report.
Thank you, Ms. Page. That's truly one of my favorite nights watching you in action during the award ceremony. It's really fun. All right. Next, we have Dr. Reddy, the assistant superintendent of the Instructional Support Services Division.
Good evening, President Reiser, board of trustees, student board member Grayden, superintendent Dr. Masetti and the NVUSD community. It has been a great week welcoming students back for the second half of the school year. We're excited and ready to continue our focus in 2025 on high-impact teaching and learning in NVUSD. Since our last board meeting, the NVUSD instructional leadership team has launched the development of an instructional framework. This process began on December 10th when we explored the importance of instructional frameworks, studying a case from Garden Grove Unified School District, a high-performing district with similar student demographics. The case underscores how an instructional framework provides clear expectations and continuous improvement for educators, a common language for team communication and a foundation for identifying professional learning needs. The NVUSD instructional framework, as we move forward, will emphasize proven practices such as modeling, guided practice and formative assessment, ensuring alignment with grade level standards and supporting literacy development across content areas. These efforts aim to improve student achievement outcomes as measured by the California State Dashboard in an alignment with our NVUSD strategic plan indicators. Looking ahead to the late spring, NVUSD plans to form a coalition of teachers to co-develop and pilot the framework. Additionally, we will define literacy and language strategies within the MTSS framework for Tier One to further strengthen instructional practices. This initiative supports NVUSD's commitment to delivering rigorous, high-impact instruction for all students. Foundational to our instructional framework is a commitment to ensuring all students have access to rigorous grade-level curriculum. In December, NVUSD district and site leaders launched systematized learning walks to focus on ensuring that classroom tasks meet grade-level standards. These walks provide district and site leaders with an opportunity to engage in meaningful dialogue about equitable access to teaching and learning at grade level. We believe that if we engage in learning walks and reflect on our findings, we will strengthen our ability to provide responsive and actionable feedback that leads to continuous improvement of teaching and learning. I had the opportunity to engage in learning walks at Napa Junction Elementary School, Canyon Oaks Elementary School and American Canyon Middle School with principal De La Mater, Vasquez and Patalier. I witnessed students in seventh grade math learning about linear and nonlinear equations, using proficiency scales to guide their practice at the appropriate level of learning. Students provided feedback on model claims, evidence and reasoning paragraphs to improve their reading and writing comprehension in English Language Arts. At the elementary level, we observed a literacy block where students were engaged in small group instruction to strengthen their phonemic skills and a block math, a math block where students were engaged in number corner to build their math fluency. Learning walks will be a monthly practice at each school site as we continue to invest in the development of site administrators and teacher leaders to ensure support for and use of curricular resources that have been adopted to support high-impact teaching and learning and consistency of assessments and lessons. I would like to take a moment to thank executive director of Curriculum Instruction and Multilingual Learner Services, Matt Manning, for his partnership and leadership in this work and congratulate him on his selection as Association of California School Administrators, ACAS Central Office Administrator of the Year for Region Four. We are excited to support him as he moves on to compete at the state level. I will end my report this evening by celebrating our students who continued their learning over winter break through the NVUSD Extended Learning Opportunities Program. The Expanded Learning Opportunities Program hosted enrichment camps at MVL, Snow, Shear, Northwood and the American Canyon and Napa Clubhouses. These camps, held from January 2nd to 10th, provided hands-on learning opportunities for over 700 students. Activities included crafts, visits from special guests and field trips to the Napa Library, Nimbus Art Studio, Napa Bowl and the Sonoma Children's Museum. Academic skill-building sessions led by credential teaching staff allowed students to strengthen their academic skills while having fun. Transportation was made available through the NVUSD Transportation Department for students in need. The programs were organized in partnership with the Boys and Girls Club, Napa County Office of Education and NVUSD's own child, childcare program, all dedicated to creating a safe and welcoming environment for students. And that concludes my report.
Thank you for that thorough report, Dr. Reddy. And we have assistant superintendent Rob Manguala, who oversees business and operational services.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to update the board and the community. There are a number of exciting items on tonight's agenda related to facilities improvement that are part of Measure B and also some items that are not part of Measure B, both equally important. So with the passage of Measure B, you'll see a number of items that represent our initial steps delivering on our promises to, to the community. You'll see Resolution 25-16, which certifies the results of the election into our minutes. This is the first step to being able to sell Measure B, uh, bonds in the spring. Resolution 25-17 is also on the agenda. This resolution establishes the bylaws for Measure B Citizens Bond Oversight Committee. More information about this topic can be found on our website at NVUSD.org backslash CBOC, Measure B, beginning tomorrow. A, a five-year contract with Van Pelt for program construction management is also on the agenda. The district published a RFP for this contract and evaluated a total of three companies that responded. We determined that Van Pelt was by far the best choice for the contract. You will also see two lease-leaseback contracts for our schools that will have summer construction. Uh, the first one is with Wright Construction for Browns Valley and Silverado. The second contract is with Core Construction for, Core West for McPherson, Phillips, Pueblo Vista, Shear and Vichy. These contracts are the initial contracts that get the planning started. So there, there will be additional contracts going to the board once they've contracted with our subcontractors and have the pricing for, for the work that'll happen this summer. So we're very excited about just jumping right in with both feet on this, with this. Um, there's also a contract with Casa Studios who will complete an assessment for our play structures. So this is an important promise that we made to evaluate all of our play structures. And so again, this is an initial contract. Uh, once they're complete with the initial contract, they'll bring back cost estimates and design for our play structures. Uh, there's also an item to enter an agreement to have solar arrays installed at a variety of sites. Uh, there will be a presentation about this topic and as a reminder, no bond funds will be used for this project as it is a power purchasing agreement that will save the district very significant dollars. On the technology side, you'll see a number of items related to district Wi-Fi, switches, our security cameras and our public address systems. We anticipate that we'll complete all of our public address systems prior to summer. This concludes my report.
President Reiser, that concludes the executive staff reports this evening.
Okay. Thank you very much. So that brings us to H4, the Facilities and Bond Program Update. There were a lot more people here when I first got here.
It's kind of quiet. It's not very strong.
So, thank you, uh, board, President Reiser, Dr. Masetti for having me back again. Um, today we're going to be touching on capital improvement program. I love calling it that because your program's so vast now because you have multiple bonds.
People do have capital.
Yes, exactly. Um, so my, uh, first report on Measure B next steps, which is pretty exciting, and then we'll update the board on Measure A2 and then go on to some active construction projects that fall outside of the traditional bonds. All right. Measure B, here we go. Uh, summer 2025 planning is underway. Um, at Silverado Middle School, we've completed roofing and HVAC at Building E and the large gym. Um, but Silverado will get roofing and HVAC replacements at the other buildings on campus, including a new coat of paint and some paving work. Um, at Browns Valley, as you remember, we did roofing last summer, so this summer we'll go back, do HVAC replacement, some paving work and some exterior paint. Um, and then Phillips, Pueblo Vista, McPherson, Shear, Vichy will all get a full treatment. We're in the planning process as, um, Rob mentioned regarding picking our contractor and planning the phasing of all the projects, so we're getting started on that. West Park, um, who received roofing and HVAC very early in Measure H, um, they will be getting a new coat of paint and getting, um, some drainage issues that they have on this site. You might remember some slideshow pictures of flooded, uh, paving, so we're going to work on that. All right. Um, really exciting. We have been, uh, talking with Casa Studios about, um, our playground evaluations. So, um, as mentioned previously, we'll move forward with a lot more detailed reporting on fi-finalizing the evaluations of our playgrounds, um, doing a condition matrix that will show cost information and the condition of the surfacing and the structures at each of the elementary sites. Um, we're going to be preparing, um, each campus's documentation. So this was an example they gave us of the work that they'd like to be doing. We'll develop a scope for each campus and then develop a phasing plan for how we're going to roll them out and do those improvements. All right. Measure B planning is underway. Um, you are working tonight on some items regarding the Citizens Bond Oversight Committee. Then we'll get to work on our implementation plan. Um, we've had meetings already with the communications team here at NVUSD, um, to start a communications outreach on Measure B, make sure the community knows all the great stuff we're going to be doing. Um, and then I'll be developing a program schedule. All right. Donaldson Way. I don't know if any of you have driven by Donaldson Way since Christmas.
Measure A2.
Measure A2, yes. Thank you. Uh, Measure A2 at Donaldson Way. Um, I got the right logo in there, so that's good. Um, if you've driven by, you've seen a lot of change. Um, over the winter break, our contracting team was hard at work. There were four portables in the footprint of the new multipurpose room. They were relocated, rain and all. They got the job done, which was pretty exciting. Um, and you can see some asphalt patching there. Not to worry, that is the temporary patch for the remainder of the school year. They'll be getting all-new place surfacing at the end of the project. Um, so we're started breaking ground there, um, and putting up construction fencing and we really appreciate, um, the partnership with principal Dennis. He's been incredible to work with and so patient with all the planning and the moves and things that we've had been working with. All right. We're also in A2 planning process for some roofing and HVAC replacements at Canyon Oaks and American Canyon Middle School. They're a little bit more strategic because the schools are not quite as old. Um, so we're being a little more strategic about where we're doing roofing and HVAC according to the age of the units and who needs what. Um, and in December, the board approved a contract with Arntz Builders, who will be helping us with the general contracting at both sites. All right. These are some exciting pictures of the farm at Vintage High. Um, it's finally out of the ground. This was one of the first projects I went to a meeting on when I first got to NVUSD, so it's pretty exciting that it's finally happening. You can see the, um, buildings taking shape and where the barns are going to be. Um, so we're really happy that we're getting going on that project and out of the ground. All right. Well, it's Silverado, uh, Building E repairs. We made lemons, uh, or made lemonade out of lemons here, so we had a roof blow off and we ended up with beautiful new classrooms on the inside. So, um, we got new roofing, new HVAC, new carpet, new paint and new furnishings in Building A, or Building E at Silverado. Yeah, please do.
So, so what we wanted to do here, we wanted, it is kind of a surprise to the school, so we wanted it to toss in a middle school kind of redesign on the inside to build a model. So they were so patient with us, so what we did is we just kind of moved mountains to go ahead and do an in-interior refresh where we did carpet, paint, walls. It's still not completely done. They still have to finalize the HVAC unit, which is why, why you see the T-bar still kind of up in the ceiling. Uh, and then we worked really hard with a vendor to get furniture in the classroom. So the, these six rooms, is that right?
Eight.
Eight, eight rooms have new furniture in them also, and so we hope to have them open probably in the next, what do you think, month?
They actually fired up the units today.
Nice.
All right. Phew, that's it. I have a quick question. When you do the playground analysis, how does TK play into that?
Give me a second. Go ahead. Okay. Um, so we're, start by evaluating what each site has, and then we consider whether there's age-appropriate elements for TK. And then there are some rules from the California Department of Education around separating the kinder TK, um, play structures from the, um, older kid play structures. So we look at that depending upon whether we're just making some repairs to the existing play structure or we're building all-new, because if you're just making repairs, you're grandfathered in with what you have, but it will be a consideration. Anything else? Thank you.
Thank you so much. That is so exciting. This is like the most uplifting board meeting ever, my goodness.
Good first one.
I know, right? Okay, uh, do we have any public comment on, uh, that bond program update?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you very much, Ms. Green. That's, that brings us to I, the Approval of Consent Agenda. Background information on these items is provided to the board prior to the meeting. A common motion takes action without discussion on all roll call vote unless discussion of an item is requested by a board member. Um, can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Move to approve consent agenda.
I will second. We have a first from trustee Hart, second from trustee Jankowicz. Um, is there public comment on this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you very much. And, uh, Ms. Morales, can we have a roll call vote?
Yes. Student board member. Student board member Grayden?
Aye.
Trustee Reiser?
Aye.
Trustee Chu?
Aye.
Trustee Gonzalez-Mares?
Aye.
Trustee Hart?
Aye.
Trustee Jankowicz?
Aye.
Trustee Martin?
Aye.
Trustee Water?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Morales. Okay, uh, now on to J2A, Business Services, the Future Solar Array Installation Planning
On our solar project that we've been working on for about a year or so. Next slide, please. And so, uh, this, this work tonight that we're going to be talking about is aligned with Strategy 14, improve and maintain our facilities. And so as background, uh, what we'll be talking about tonight, we'll be talking about, um, what is a power purchasing agreement and why school districts use power purchasing agreement? We'll talk about the, the cost impact, or I should say, the cost savings for the district. Uh, there'll be a discussion about Government Code 4217, which describes how we will be procuring, uh, this equipment. Uh, we'll go through the, the competitive selection process we went to. Go Paul will present, um, on the savings and then there'll be an introduction to the BPI team, which is who we're recommending for the, for this work. Next slide, please. And so as background, in effort to, in an effort to reduce costs and create more sustainable practices, the district started exploring adding additional solar panels in '23, '24, probably even sooner than that, probably more like '22, '23. We, we set up some guiding principles and so those guiding principles were to utilize NEM 2, which did sunset, but we were, with, with the help of Go Paul and others, we were able to get our applications in under NEM 2. Um, those applications are active. Uh, one of the requirements is we, uh, we complete this work by April 2026. So we have a fairly tight timeline, but we, we know, we feel confident we can get the work done. Um, we wanted to also create a, a competitive and transparent process. So Government Code 4217 allows us to just, uh, directly, um, pick somebody for solar as long as there are savings to the district, but we did want to go one step further and do the extra work to really just ensure that we maximize the savings to the district. And so we did make it harder on ourselves, which is why it took so much time. So I did, do admit, I made it really hard. Um, but we do see some significant savings here. Um, again, we wanted to maximize the benefit to the district and thus the taxpayer. And so we are, at this point, recommending a power purchasing agreement, which, again, which we'll be talking about. Um, and then also this, this last bullet, what it talks about is we did present to the board in a prior meeting, um, the status of district solar. And so as a reminder, we have a combination of solar that we owned, solar energy that we owned, or we own, and solar energy that we utilize through a power purchasing agreement. So every company that we've utilized with a power purchasing agreement has gone bankrupt. So that's just the nature of the industry. It's a lot of work, but still ultimately, we still have saved money with solar. So we've saved significant dollars. It's always going to be much easier to just turn on the light switch and pay PG&E, but PG&E has become very unpredictable with the rates. And so we know that just from what, what happens in our own, in our own homes, that rates just continue to go through the roof with really just no-ended site. Uh, next slide. And so what is, so what is a power purchasing agreement and why are they used? So the, the first step to this, which is an on, on So the first step to this, which is on here, is you first figure out the project and you design the project, right? So we did publish the RFP for that. We worked with Go Paul to come up with the details and the RFP. And then a number of companies responded and came up with a design, and they come up with a cost. So the all-in cash price for this project is about $12.9 million. That's the cost of building this project, beginning to end. But we wanted to look at this from a different standpoint. So again, we could look at buying the solar. Currently, there's the opportunity to get a 30% tax credit. We're not sure really where that's going to land. And that tax credit just turns into dollars for school districts. School districts are eligible for those dollars under the Inflation Reduction Act. So we pay 70 cents on the dollar, essentially. But there is a little bit of question about whether that will continue for school district and government entities under the Trump administration. So we're not certain if that would still be there. Even without it, there would still be significant savings to the school district, even if we decided to pay cash. With a power purchasing agreement, what happens is large mutual funds and investors, they look to loan the money to the construction firms. And what they do is they add their profit margin on top of that. And then school districts, they regularly pay their bills, right? They have very regular payments of cash flow. And what we do is we pay them or we agree to buy electricity at a fixed rate that includes their rate of return for a certain time period. So in the case of the agreement that you see in front of you tonight, we're looking at purchasing electricity at 20 cents per kilowatt hour. The district currently spends in excess of 40 cents, so about 43 cents. It includes an escalator of 2.5%, meaning it would go up by 2.5% every year. But it's starting at 20% and then marching all the way to 40 cents. So PG&E rate, I mean, if you look at it, again, the savings that we get from this, it will depend ultimately in how much PG&E continues to go up. But the chance, I mean, I can't predict the future always, but one thing I could bet a lot on is that PG&E rates will go up higher than 0%. So there's 100% chance that PG&E rates over the next 25 years will continue to go up. So which is what makes this, the deal, in the district's best interest. So again, payments are typically 20 to 30 years. It helps limit future cost increases from PG&E because essentially what we're doing is we agree to purchase all the electricity that this solar generates. Next slide. So what do we also, so the district is also, you know, we're committed to exploring more sustainable practices. But ultimately, we're a school district. Our primary responsibility is educating students. And so when we do this, we need to do this in a way that's fiscally responsible. So, and we're not a school district where the community wants to spend bond funds on this. So even though the school district has spent bond funds in the past, that was not part of Measure B. And so no bond fund will be spent on this project. So just kind of being very clear about that. And so again, what are we trying to do here? We're trying to accomplish two things. We're trying to create more sustainable practices while also maximizing our resources. The savings on this project, it does vary. Again, ultimately, it will depend on what happens with PG&E and where the rates will go. And so we have a series of slides to go into that. But to summarize it, it's somewhere, over the course of 25 years, it's between $3.5 million at least to $12.6. It could, it really depends on where PG&E rates go. Next slide. So what is Ed Code 4217? It's a contract delivery method. So it's not a grant, but it's a procurement method where school districts can use it to procure certain specialized things like solar. So in that case, the biggest thing that you need to do with this is ensure that they're saving. So what has kind of historically happened in this arena is school districts are approached by companies that sell them solar, that also do the analysis for you, that say, well, we think you're going to save these dollars. You should buy this solar. And so for me, a little bit, it's kind of been a red flag for me where, yes, it looks like you're going to save the money, but I want to know I'm going to save the money, which is where Go Paul comes in. And so what we did with this project is we did hire a third party to take a look and ensure that the savings that the company is telling that we're going to get, that they're actually going to materialize. And so when you look in the documents, you will see a variety of different analysis that show the savings. But ultimately, we're going with Go Paul's number in terms of the recommendation for this project. Next slide. So as part of the selection process, we did, again, we wanted to create competition. We also wanted to just learn about this, creating a better understanding for NAPA's options. We published an RFP in September of 2024. It feels like it was 10 years ago right now with all the work we did for Measure B. Responses were due in November. We had two firms that submitted, BPI, who we're recommending tonight, Juwa Capital. And we did work with Site Logic earlier in this process and other items, but they chose not to submit for the RFP. We utilized third-party, Go Paul, Recolite Energy to review and help us throughout the process. Next slide. At this slide, I'll pass it over to Go Paul.
Hi, everyone. I think your eyes will bubble when you see this, but can we just go to the next slide? Right away. So what this is, is site by site, meter by meter, a comparison of how much you're paying PG&E right now, how much you will pay PG&E after the solar is installed, and then after the PPA payments are made to the third-party financier, how much will you save? And again, just for context, you know, the school district has gone solar in three phases so far. NEM 1, back then, if you offset 80% of your usage, you were able to offset 100% of your bill. Under NEM 2, which is this regime here, you're offsetting 80% of your usage, but only 57% of your bill. Right? So the economics have changed, you know, in PG&E's favor against us. And the third is if you go under NEM 3, if we don't make this deadline, you lose another 15% roughly in savings. You'll still save money, but your savings will reduce a little bit. So there is an urgency to have the project built, completed by April 2026. And that's why BPI is here too, so you can meet them. Nothing else on this? Oh, so just a minor correction on Rob. He said the rates will increase with the PPA by 2.5%? Increase by 2.25%? 2.25, yeah. Next slide, please. Pardon? So I'm a worst-case guy. I'm very optimist. I'm very, you know, I say, what happens if, you know, we all get our wishes and PG&E's price does not go up? It remains flat over the next 20 years or 25 years? And so you'll see the first, the bottom line shows that these are annual savings. So we start, in all scenarios, we start with about $375,000 in the first year. And then you can see that the annual savings decline if PG&E's rate is at 0%. And why is that? For two reasons. One is the PPA is increasing by 2.25%. But second is, over time, the solar modules will produce less, right? They degrade by about half a percent a year. So your exposure to PG&E increases by that half a percent a year. If PG&E's rate increased at the same rate as the PPA providers, then the annual savings in the 25th year will increase from 370 up to 618, whatever that number is.
619.
619. Yeah. So about $620,000. So these are the annual savings. And you can see, if it goes up by 5%, then your savings in the 25th year is 2.2 million.
What's the historic rate for PG&E?
Yeah. When I was here last, I showed you, I think it was averaging 10% a year. So it's going to be double that, right? But again, we don't want to compare ourselves. Because if you're a future board looking back and you say, wait, you know, you didn't get the 10% a year, you're going to be very disappointed. So better to set expectations low here. All right. Next slide, please. So this is the cumulative impact. These are the two numbers that Rob shared with you, is what happens if PG&E's rate doesn't increase at all? You still make $3.5 million over 25 years. And if it increases by the same rate as a PPA rate, it's 12. But you can see, it can go as high as 30 or maybe even double that if PG&E, you know, keeps up there.
Shenanigans.
Yes. Not my word, but.
That was a fairly nice word. Next slide, please. BPI, I feel like you come up really quick here. So just the next series of slides, it's intended to introduce a BPI team. They are a local partner here. So one of the things that we found that we're really excited about BPI is Barron and his team, they're from Napa. Barron actually lives here in Napa. One of the problems we've had with solar companies is just finding somebody who would stick around and help us maintain it. So not only are we talking to BPI about this new project, but trying to bring them on board to help us with our existing solar because it is very complex. It is way beyond my ability or anybody in my team's ability. And you do need specialized help. I don't know if you want to introduce yourselves?
Hi, my name is Johan. I'm the president of BPI. My background is, I've been 12 years in the solar industry. This is where we built and developed solar projects. Company before this one is, I, that's where I actually met Barron. We built a company, which we sold majority of shares into Israeli company also. So we have been in solar development for 12, me 12 years, and Barron does almost 19, 19 years now. Both of us as locals. And then I'm going to bring up Thomas, he's our VP of Construction.
So I'm VP of Construction. I have known Barron for 14 years. I've been with a couple of different companies. I'm a new person to the, admin to the BPI team, but I worked with Barron 14 years ago on some projects down in the Meridian area in Escondido, the city of Escondido. As Johan just stated, we have been in business for 17, between 17 and 19 years in the solar industry. So very longevity as far as solar companies go and look forward to that trend continuing. I come with over 100 megawatts worth of experience in these types of projects. Worked on multiple projects in areas that had high-traffic areas, which I anticipate to see in some of your different school areas where we need to coordinate with your school principals and administrator and staff to make sure we minimize the impact as much as possible if we have the opportunity to build these projects for your teams. And we look forward to working with you in the future.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Vine and I head Engineering Department at BPI. I've been with the company for about seven years. Yeah, I live here in Napa as well. Yeah, I'm super excited for these projects. You know, we've been working on similar projects across the state, you know, multifamily, retail settings, wineries, solar, carports, batteries, anything. So yeah, we're very excited to, you know, I'll be involved in the permitting process effectively and working with utility and setting the construction team up for success. So yeah, we're super excited. This is a great opportunity to have a big impact locally here, and we really want to take it on. Thank you.
Next slide, please. So just a couple more slides on this. So just again, they're a local company, they're grounded in Napa, Comprehensive Energy Solutions. Next slide. So a diverse set of offerings. Next slide. I know they covered a lot of this. So this is just an example of some of the vendors that they've done solar on. So there are some very large companies, you can see here in this space. Next slide. This is the construction company that will be working on the construction. And so one of the things that we wanted to ensure is that we had some, the construction company that was doing the work had some school district experience, right? So there's private sector experience. And then there's experience with DSA, which covers school districts. And so we wanted to ensure that they were bringing something to the table with school district experience. And you can see this, quite a few school districts are listed for M-bar construction. Next slide. This is the engineering company that will be helping us with the DSA submittals. That's probably the biggest hurdle here. The biggest hurdle is getting approval by DSA. The actual construction of this is fairly simple. The structures are pre-made, they're pre-approved by DSA. Essentially, what we'll be doing is testing the soil. They will put the foundation in the soil, like you see out here, the pillars, install the pre-built structures, and then connecting them to electricity. Next slide. Next slide. Next slide. If we can just kind of go through that, next one. Some of the school districts, next slide. So next up. So what we're doing tonight, so again, there is still some work in front of us tonight. So we will be holding a public hearing, right? So a public hearing. And then what you will be doing is you'll be giving the authority to finish and finalize the contract with Atlas Energy. So Atlas Energy is the power purchasing agreement that's providing funding. And so we received a draft of the contract. Again, we've been moving mountains in the background to get this done. We received the draft from them. Last Friday, our contract went to our attorney, Kelly Rem, who suggested changes to it and had submitted it to Atlas Energy. So the contract is with them. And so what you'll see tonight, again, authority for me to finalize that agreement with Atlas Energy for the power purchasing agreement. So power purchasing agreements, they can be, it's kind of one of those things where school districts do it in a variety of different ways. And so we've just been, we've spent a lot of time doing some research around it because really what you're doing is I'm contracting, or we're contracting with someone to give us energy at a certain rate. But what about the construction component of it? That's typically not part of the PPA agreement. And so in speaking to other school districts, we've kind of, we've found that they're signing these power purchasing agreements, but they don't have any teeth in them for the construction component. So if they run into problems with the construction company, maybe the construction company shows up. And they want to dig up parking lots when kids are around. And we're saying, well, no, you can't do that. And then they say, well, the power purchasing agreement says we can, right? So that's basically where we've held the line with our attorney to make sure and include some language in there around the construction component of it, which is, again, they're typically not used to getting comments like they got from Kelly Rem around it. But we just want to make sure that we're covered for the construction component. Because really, we have them doing the construction. They'll be contracted with BPI, but we wanted to include ourself in the contract. So which is why I'm bringing an item that's, the contract is 95% done and we're just waiting for them to finish up with it. The timeline, again, what we're looking to do is get as many sites as possible done over the summer. So in speaking with Kelly, this does not impact any of the Measure B construction because really, they're being done in two separate spots. One's in a parking lot and one's on the school site. So we're trying to get as much of it done over the summer. Ultimately, it will depend on DSA in the timeline. Next up. Public hearing, we spoke about this. Next slide. We spoke about this. I think we're down to questions. Let's see. Next slide.
Rob, is the DSA component just a normal DSA hiccup of the timeline being dreadful? Or is there, because it's not a norm necessarily in school districts, that DSA does extra kind of oversight?
I would say that it's the opposite for this. So these are DSA pre-approved structures. So I would anticipate they would move through DSA fairly quickly.
Fairly quickly, okay.
But what's happening right now is a lot of school districts and entities are racing to meet that NEM 2 deadline of April 2026. So that's really the factor there, right? So it's all of that. So this is normal for DSA. I don't know if you guys want to jump in and add to that? Or anybody here to talk about DSA? Or did I cover? You've got it.
I just didn't know if that, if it was a norm and if they were used to doing, you know, approval process on this kind of thing, if they had the expertise to do so in an expeditious manner or if it was going to cause some kind of timeline drag.
Yeah. I mean, we realize, I mean, that's where, with all these projects, it's always like, it's the approval and then it's ready, set, go. Same as the thing, like we're looking at for Measure B. For Measure B, because we're trying to do a very aggressive timeline because we know that next summer is going to be a lot more expensive, especially with the fires, we're pushing really hard to go get done with the architects, get it all done, get it submitted. So this is already essentially a DSA pre-approved product, so we think it'll go by quick.
Question for you regarding, you said that the structures will go one in a parking lot and one in a school site. Can you tell me what sites those are or where those will be?
If you want to go back up to the previous slide for me, if you want to bring up back up the presentation? So unfortunately, they're not going on all the sites because part of the driving question we had to do with all this when we evaluated the sites, we wanted to ensure that we wouldn't have to install extra PG&E equipment and switching because the timeline for that just didn't work and it includes extra costs. There's a series of slides with a cost on it. If you go all the way, this one right here. One before that? So Alta Heights, Bel Air, Brown Valley, Canyon Oaks, Donaldson Way, McBeerson.
It's going to go at all of these sites?
Yep, yes.
Okay. Okay. So what's existing stays, nothing changes. It's if we own it, we don't own it, whatever. Those are completely separate from what we're planning here. So all of these sites will be included. Got it. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Other questions from trustees? Okay. Is there any public comment on this presentation, Ms. Green?
There is no public comment on this presentation.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, so moving along, that brings us to action items. We have K1 General Services, K1A. It's a resolution 25-18 reaffirming support for equal access to education for all children and families regardless of immigration status.
Move to approve.
I'll second.
We have a first from trustee Hart. Sorry, I wasn't looking. Second from trustee Jankowitz. Is there public comment on this item? I believe we have public comment in the room. Is there public comment online?
There is no public comment on this item.
Okay, so we have Michelle Group.
Oh, there we go. I'm Michelle Group. I'm the director of the Community Leaders Coalition and I want to begin by expressing my appreciation to the school board and superintendent Miss Sadi for your leadership in proactively making the statement of support and production for historically marginalized communities. The Community Leaders Coalition was founded in the aftermath of the 2016 elections as a grassroots initiative to address the growing concerns within Napa County, particularly regarding BIPOC LGBTQ plus and immigrant populations. We were established to create a collaborative space for nonpartisan community leaders to engage in advocacy and collective problem solving. Our vision today remains the same as when we first came together, fostering a community that is inclusive, equitable, and vibrant, prioritizing trust, safety, health, education, and empowerment shared as shared responsibilities. Over the last two and a half months, we have been working closely with the Agencies of Citizenship Legal Services Collaborative to prepare for the incoming administration's immigration policies by developing trainings, increasing our capacity to offer support services, and share resources. Known as Napa Valley Together Allies for Immigrants, we will be launching a website in the coming weeks that we will serve as a central source of information for these trainings, resources, and volunteer opportunities. I invite you to share this resource with your staff, family, and students. Thank you again for your support and we look forward to working with you. Napa Valley Together Allies for Immigrants and it'll be nappavallietogether.org. Okay, thanks.
Thank you so much for your comment. Next public comment, Amber Twitchell. Thank you so much.
Good evening. Well, we don't have a football championship win and we don't have a bond measure win, but I'm going to maintain that this is still a win and gets to be celebrated. So I realize we lost the audience, but I'm still here to cheer. So this is a big deal. My name is Amber Twitchell. I'm the associate director at On the Move. At On the Move, we work really hard to create and enhance safe spaces in the family resource centers, in the wellness centers, wherever else district staff will let us be. We work hard to provide services for the community that they ask for, like immigration support and know your rights and parent engagement and really anything else the district will let us do. And it's so important to the vital health and wellbeing of this community. And no matter how hard we work, there's absolutely no possible way that we could do this all by ourselves. And so I wanted to come today to say thank you for partnering with us in this work, to say thank you to the NVUSD staff for working with us to make sure that our services are great, and to thank you for being a caring and connected community as evidenced by this proclamation. We know that words matter and your words matter and these words matter. And it's important to say these words out loud and that the community can hear these words out loud. So thank you. Thank you for your courage. Thank you for your, you know, commitment to this and thank you for your leadership because that really, really matters too.
Thank you. Okay, comments, discussion from board members?
I would like to just read something before the board.
Before we.
Before we voted. Yeah, before, yeah. Is there any discussion by the board?
Are there comments from the trustees before Dr. Miss Sadi? Okay.
Okay. So as superintendent of the Napa Valley Unified School District, I am proud to recommend the adoption of the Safe Haven Resolution to the board tonight reaffirming our unwavering commitment to providing a secure and inclusive educational environment for all students regardless of their immigration status or personal background. Our district does have a longstanding tradition of welcoming diversity, equity, and inclusion and belonging and standing as a pillar of support for every child and family in our community. The adoption of this resolution by the board tonight potentially reflects our fundamental belief that every student deserves access to a high-quality education without fear, discrimination, or intimidation while also aligning with our recently adopted core value of equity and access for students, staff, and families. The resolution also clearly supports the implementation of strategy four in the newly adopted 2024 to 2029 strategic plan, which we identify as cultivating a culture of belonging throughout NVUSD. The Safe Haven Resolution ensures that our schools will remain places of learning and support where students can focus on their education free from external concerns. We are committed to maintaining a culture of safety, trust, and mutual respect. Our staff will receive pertinent information and professional development to respond appropriately to inquiries from external agencies while upholding the protections which ensure free public education for all children regardless of their immigration status. In collaboration with local organizations and legal experts, we will provide resources and support services to families who may need guidance and assistance. We believe that education is a fundamental right and we will continue working tirelessly to protect and uplift every student in our district. To our students, families, and staff, know that you are valued, you are welcomed, you are safe in our NVUSD schools, and you belong here. Together, we will ensure that our schools remain safe havens where every child can thrive and reach their fullest potential. So with that, I bring forth the resolution for recommendation to the board tonight. And I do want to thank President Reiser and trustee Gonzalez-Mares, who did give some preliminary feedback on the resolution that is before the board this evening.
Any comment from the board?
Education is not a privilege, it's a right.
And I'd like to echo what Ms. Twitchell said. It's important to say these words out loud. And so I'm grateful and proud of our organization for standing with all of our students and all of our community regardless of immigration status.
I add something.
First, trustee Gonzalez-Mares.
Yeah, I think it was said by our superintendent. What more can also a school board ask and also require of the great work that our superintendent does with the team and then have those words be expressed by our leader of our organization. It's really important as that, not just the message, but also the actions that go behind that will mean a lot to our families when it comes to the time of need, whether they come through our classroom doors or into one of our key partners like On the Move and the Family Resource Centers and collaborates that the Community Leaders Coalition is bringing. You see two people here, but they represent dozens of organizations behind them too. And it's really collaborative, collective, and that we are not standing alone. The Napa County Board of Supervisors did their own version of a statement. Other statements are coming out. Most recently, all of the representatives of law enforcement, from our sheriff to all the chief of police representing their respective cities, from the corrections office, district attorney and public defenders. So it's really great to also see their statement. And so we're not alone in this because it's really important to also know that it takes the entire community. So I'm really proud of our action tonight to really be part of that collective, which we already were. But it's really important to make that statement. So I want to thank everyone.
Thank you so much, trustee Gonzalez-Mares. Any other comments, discussion from the board? No? Okay. So can I get a first?
Hang on.
Oh, we already did that. I'm so sorry. Okay. And it is a roll call vote as a resolution. So can we get a roll call vote, Ms. Morales?
Yes. Student board member Grayden?
Aye.
Trustee Reiser?
Aye.
Trustee Chu?
Aye.
Trustee Gonzalez-Mares?
Aye.
Trustee Hart?
Aye.
Trustee Jankowitz?
Aye.
Trustee Martin?
Aye.
Trustee Water?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for hanging.
Thank you very much. Okay, so now that brings us to item K1C, which is the January 2025 School Board Recognition Month Proclamation.
Thank you, President Reiser. So I also would like to make a statement. Spent a lot of hours preparing for this board meeting. There's so much on it. So January 2025 is officially School Board Recognition Month. The Napa Valley Unified School District is proud to join more than 1,000 local education agencies in the state in recognizing the contributions of board members like the seven of you during School Board Recognition Month. As schools work to provide an equitable education to all of our students and support our student wellness and personal development, board members like yourselves play a key role in setting the foundation, the policies and priorities to support optimal student outcomes. Board members are our elected representatives and a vital link between the school district and the community. I've always said I think they should be sainted. The board sets the foundation and vision for the district, directs resources where they are most needed, often find, oftentimes find themselves having to make difficult decisions, establish annual priorities, and ensure accountability to be the community, I'm sorry, ensure accountability to the community by monitoring progress towards goals. Their end goal, of course, is to support and elevate student achievement through effective student-centered governance. During the past few years, specifically this Board of Education, the Napa Valley Unified Board of Education has worked to ensure that NVUSD students have access to state-of-the-art technology, made dramatic improvements in facilities, provide fiscal stewardship, and led the district to fiscal solvency through persisting declining enrollment, support the passage of two school bonds to modernize schools in American Canyon and Napa, establish a commitment to literacy, math improvement, and career readiness, focus on creating better conditions of improved teaching, learning, and student achievement, advocate for students in TK 12 public school systems at the national and statewide levels, and so much more. The NVUSD board members are trustee Reiser, trustee Lisa Chu, trustee Elba Gonzalez-Mares, trustee Juliana Hart, trustee Robin Jankowitz, trustee Cindy Water, and newly elected trustee John Henry Martin. I wanted to read your names into the record as part of the recognition. I hope that everyone will join me in recognizing our hardworking, dedicated board members who make tremendous sacrifices, who demonstrate incredible amounts of courage, who led through times of both opportunity and challenge. As a superintendent, I know how privileged and honored I am to work with a governance team like you that has a laser-like focus on improving the educational experiences and outcomes for all students while keeping students the main thing. So with that, I request that you vote yes on a School Board Recognition Month Proclamation for yourselves. Oh wait, is it proclamation? Do I have to juggle? I will now move to approve our proclamation of our sainthood.
First from trustee Saint Hart. Can I get a second? A second from trustee Martin. Is there any public comment on this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
No one here to proclaim or recognize.
That's why we proclaim it ourselves. Yay, thank you, Kelly. Okay. And is it roll call vote because it's a resolution?
Yes.
Okay, so proclamation. Ms. Morales, can we get a roll call vote, please?
Yes. Student board member Grayden?
Aye.
Trustee Reiser?
Aye.
Trustee Chu?
Aye.
Trustee Gonzalez-Mares?
Aye.
Trustee Hart?
Aye.
Trustee Jankowitz?
Aye.
Trustee Martin?
Aye.
Trustee Water?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Morales. Moving on to K1D, the Register of Official Signatures of Governing Board Members. Can I get a first?
I'll move to approve.
I will second.
First by trustee Chu, second by trustee Hart. Is there any public comment on this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Okay, student board member Grayden?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, that brings us to item K1E, authorized reimbursements for substitute and administrative costs for trustee release time under Education Code 44987.3. And for clarity, trustee Martin, you will need to recuse yourself and abstain from this vote because there's a conflict of interest. It's regarding reimbursement for your employer for substitute teacher costs. And before the board deliberates and votes, do you have any comments to share with us?
Oh, is your mic on? Sorry. It's the nature of a teacher's job that they have very little choice in when they take their time off. I am allotted five paid personal days per year. This is why the California Teachers Association lobbied to have this provision entered into the Education Code that will allow a school district to reimburse another district for the cost of a substitute teacher. They did this to make it easier for teachers to serve their communities beyond the classroom on school boards. It is clear that this is not a budgetary issue. Reimbursing my district for the cost of a substitute is not going to put undue financial strain on NVUSD. But since I will have to take time unpaid in order to fulfill my board duties, it will put a financial burden on me. A vote yes would support having a working teacher on this school board.
Okay, thank you, trustee Martin. Comments or discussion from trustees? Trustee Jankowitz?
Mr. Martin, I completely understand the impetus for your request. But this position, and it's an elected position, comes with very specific responsibilities and they were clearly outlined for you prior to you accepting this position. You took an oath to accept this position, to fulfill the role, and to do so for the betterment of students. But this oath did not come with a caveat of subcompensation. If your ability to properly fulfill this position was contingent on additional compensation, that determination should have been made prior to the oath, not post. Members of this board also work and they use their PTO, pardon me, they use their PTO or have minimized their professional schedule in order to meet board expectations and responsibilities. I do understand that ed code makes a provision for subreimbursement. Yet, that doesn't make it equitable for those that make the same sacrifice to serve NVUSD, nor in my mind should it be enacted in this case. I try to look at this issue in its entirety and it strikes me as a discriminatory practice to prioritize or value one's contribution or profession over another's. And I perceive this as disproportionate treatment. If this was an issue of need in order to properly fulfill your role as a trustee, I assume that you would not have taken the oath because you were informed of the requirements and expectations. And that was, and it was subject to board approval and therefore not guaranteed. So based on that, this can only be considered a request of want and that is not appropriate when accepting a public service role. That doesn't lessen my desire to welcome you to the board. It doesn't lessen my desire to work collaboratively and productively with you. But this is not a precedent in this circumstance that I think I can set. So I am a no vote.
Thank you. Anyone else? Trustee Gonzalez-Mares?
Yes. So trustee Martin, before sharing my final vote, I believe it's important to provide context for my decision. When I began my role as a trustee in 2016 during the week of CSBA conference, I quickly discovered the position was far more demanding than I had been led to believe. My predecessor described his duties as light, requiring just an hour or two of preparation before each meeting with no urgent challenges on the horizon. Instead, my first months included managing a crisis with the NHS football team, addressing the school mascot issue, and beginning the search for a new superintendent after the prior one gave notice of retiring. Financial stability, declining enrollment, school closures... Financial stability, declining enrollments, school closures, and bond management followed, among other challenges. From the start, this role was far from what I imagined, and I empathize with anyone stepping into these unexpected demands. Many times, you are left in the dark when considering this role, but it's still my responsibility, my decision, and my choice. That being said, I took it also upon myself to do more research. Before deciding to run, I consulted with many people, including school board members and superintendent at that time. I wanted a full understanding of the duties, responsibilities, and time commitment required. My organization and my husband, my partner for over 10 years at the time, supported my decision. We all share the understanding that this role requires sacrifice, often unnoticed and thankless, except for tonight. Our responsibilities are serious, and our time here must be treated with the utmost respect. For two years, my commute to NVUSD was from Los Angeles to Napa. Despite my office being nearby, my work frequently required me to travel to LA. I often woke up at 3:00 AM, flew to LA, completed my work, and returned to Napa for a 5:00 PM meeting for closed session, or took the last flight home at 10:00 PM to be ready for a 9:00 AM NVUSD meeting or event the next day. This was done without additional compensation, underscoring my commitment to the role. I think here's where I connect with the board. We all are in an even playing field. We all are doing what we can to show up because we knew, or maybe didn't know the full extent of the time commitment. Regardless, we must take ownership of our responsibility and show up. So I also empathize with the challenges this role presents with our respective jobs. I'm also concerned about how this decision might set a precedent for the future. This is more in regards to process, what qualifies for an approval for a per diem versus hourly when our work varies so much, from one-hour meetings to full day. The demand for our attention sometimes feels infinite, so I must see this case by case. Now, regarding the matter at hand, I appreciate that the education ed code allows the board to evaluate this option under certain circumstances. However, I don't believe the situation is a fit for this ed code. There has been ample time to prepare for the role, ask questions, and understand the responsibilities. I also question the need for a full day's compensation when the commute is manageable and the meeting duration is limited to 90 minutes, sometimes less. Our decisions carry significant weight and must be approached with thorough analysis. With that in mind, I will not be voting in favor.
Thank you. Anyone like to go next? Any comments or discussion? Trustee Water?
I'd like to thank my colleagues for their eloquent comments. You know, when I came on this board, I was aware of the workload because I'd attended meetings from, oh God, for, you know, over 10 years. Sometimes I was the only visitor in the room. And Ms. Jurgensen remembers those days. And so I knew what it entailed, and I also know as a retired teacher, you know, my time is absolutely worthless, and I don't get recompensed for anything. It is in the ed code. It is legal, and I do think it privileges one profession over the others. I know how much some board members have sacrificed to be on this board. They've taken time from their careers. The job has cost them money in spite of the small stipend that we get that generally goes towards attending school events, you know, donations and things like that. You know, it's really not intended to make up for any time lost. And I also think it's funny that we are -- somehow, the experiences of two former teachers don't seem to count. They don't seem to count. It has to be a working teacher. Of course, you know, if we're no longer teaching, we don't need a substitute teacher. Nevertheless, I am going to be voting for it, even though I think it is -- this was put into the ed code by the teachers' union because they wanted, frankly, they wanted teachers on board, you know, to be able to vote on salaries and that sort of thing. They wanted to make sure they would have somebody who is sympathetic and understood the struggles of teachers. But I think, and again, I think it's selling board members short. You don't have to be a teacher to understand what teachers experience. Nevertheless, it is in the ed code, and I choose to vote for the reimbursement, which I will point out does not go to Mr. John Henry Martin, but does go to the agency that hires substitutes.
Thank you, Trustee Water. Other comments? Trustee Chu?
So I really struggle with this. I agree with all the comments from my fellow trustees. You know, one of the issues about serving on the school board is it doesn't pay. And if you think about how representative we really are to our population, if we are not able to provide for our families, how can we serve on a board that only pays us less than $500 a month? There's no way, given what we need to do to serve our students. It really is a sacrifice. And the real inequity is not really us on the board. It really is how the state treats school board members and their compensation. I don't think it's -- you know, it's really unfortunate we actually have to have this conversation, really. Which, you know, brings me to, I think my ultimate decision is, I think anytime we can help somebody be able to fulfill their duties on the board, I think I need to support that. And so I'm going to vote yes on this because I think anytime we are able to do that, I really want to be able to do that. And it's just unfortunate that the state does not fund our board the way I think it should to really allow anyone who wants to represent their community to be on this board.
Thank you. Other comments? Okay, then I'll share a few thoughts. Oh, I'm sorry. No, you go ahead. I thought you shook your head.
I have brief comments. I know this is kind of a tough topic, and I know it's sensitive. We have a new person coming onto our board. And to echo the comments of some of the other trustees, we want to be welcoming to you. We want you to be a member of our team and be able to participate to the greatest extent possible. That being said, as one of the working members of this board that works full-time, manages a family full-time, you know, I do commit a significant amount of my monthly income, and luckily, I do the bills at my house. My husband's not really fully aware of the commitment here. But, you know, half of my PTO for the year goes to district events and learning and CSBA conferences and different things of that nature. I do think that there's some potential, and I agree with Elba's comments about, you know, these are hour-long, maybe hour-and-a-half-long meetings. I know they happen in the middle of the day, which is a challenge for me. In fact, you know, I probably would have tried to serve on this board sooner had I had a work circumstance that would have allowed me to do so. And in fact, the only reason I'm able to serve the way that I do is because my work circumstance changed. I work from home. I have some flexibility in my job now where I'm able to take an hour and a half in the middle of the day and go to, you know, a committee meeting. And in my work, I can absorb that in my schedule. Whereas when I'm commuting and going to work in Marin and on the road three, four hours a day, that wouldn't have been possible. So my service here on this board has been contingent on my ability to commit enough resources and enough, you know, to this job to really make it work for me. That being said, if we're not able to move those meetings maybe to a different time of day that might be more conducive to you, or utilize something like a Zoom meeting or a call to be able to include you in those, you know, I think those kinds of things should be explored somewhat to help alleviate some of that burden on you and to be able to try to accommodate to whatever degree possible your need. I think that that's something that we should talk about. That being said, I would be remiss, as a board member in my opinion, if I didn't support an educator's desire to serve on this board and to support teachers in general. It's kind of my role in my viewpoint. So in this instance, I'll be voting in favor of your measure.
Okay. Trustee Martin, you know, it's not lost on me the irony that we have a proclamation honoring our service and commitment as school board trustees right before your request for reimbursement. And it really highlights a problem, which is that we work really, really hard in this role, and we're not really adequately reimbursed for our time. We're not reimbursed for our time. And depending on who you ask, you know, up to and including Senator Dodd, recently-retired Senator Dodd, this is the hardest elected official role there is. So you're highlighting a problem. But I have a problem with the fact that you sort of led with this. I know you have an understanding of the depth of commitment of this job because I worked on the Governance Handbook that outlined all of the roles and responsibilities of the role of trustee. And we gave you that handbook, and we gave that handbook to all the candidates at a public meeting, candidate orientation forum, in which you and the other candidates that were at that point running for election had the opportunity to ask questions, to, you know, change your mind. We clearly outlined that this is not just two meetings a month, that this is a big commitment. So I know you had that information going in. I also know that you had the information that while the ed code allows us to consider this option, it is dependent on the vote of the trustees. So to Trustee Jankowitz's point earlier, you were aware that this was not guaranteed to you. And yet, you moved forward with your candidacy. You know, you campaigned and ran as a teacher and needing the teacher's voice on the board. You know, you disparaged the board members that are sitting here on the dais. You didn't acknowledge that there are 30 years of teaching experience on the dais, now with your presence, 33. So while I welcome your input and your insights as a working teacher, I find it sort of difficult that this is your opening, like you're a new member of the team, please compensate me at a different rate than the rest of you who have been doing this work without that special consideration and compensation. And I really believe that granting this relief for you only solves the problem for you. And that doesn't really solve the problem of the, you know, the school board trustees should be compensated more generously for the work and the commitment and the time and the responsibility that we take on willingly as a public service. And I really, my fear, and I care a lot about this team, and I hear the input from my fellow trustees, and I second it, that it is not my intention to not make you feel welcome as a new trustee. But I believe that supporting your reimbursement will actually create a new problem and that it could be divisive among the trustees here because, to the points made by my colleagues, all of us here are making sacrifices. We're making personal sacrifices, we're making financial sacrifices, we're making professional sacrifices. So it just is a little bit tricky for me to have this be the entry of, "Hi, I'd like to join your team. I haven't made any sacrifices yet, but I would like to not make them. Thank you. Please vote in favor." So while I understand that the ed code allows it, I cannot support it, even as a teacher myself. And I understand you're an educator and that you were drawn to the field and drawn to run for this position because of a commitment to children. And I trust that that commitment to the students of NVUSD, that you held, raised your hand and swore an oath to uphold your duties in this role, will remain steadfast regardless of the outcome of this vote. So that being said... Can I get a first? To support the reimbursement for Trustee Martin's -- to support authorizing the reimbursements, can I get a motion in support of authorization?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a first from Trustee Water, a second from Trustee Hart. Do we have public comment on this matter?
There is no public comment on this item.
Okay. Student Board Member Grayden?
Abstain.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? No.
No.
Opposed.
So opposed. Okay, so that is three in favor, three opposed. The resulting vote is a tie, and therefore, the authorization does not move forward. Moving on to K2B, Business Services. K2A. I'm sorry. It was, I saw the B for Business Services. That's what threw me off. My brain is getting a little tired. Okay, so I'm gabbling in a public hearing, K2B. K2A?
President Reiser, before you continue?
Before we do that, that's right. I need a motion to extend the meeting to...
I make a motion to extend the meeting to midnight.
Second.
So first from Trustee Gonzalez-Mares, second from Trustee Hart, to extend the meeting time to midnight. We're going to let our student trustee go, so she is not in favor of extending the meeting to midnight. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, thank you. So moved. Now I'm gabbling in K2A, the Public Hearing Resolution 25-20, Energy Savings and Purchase Power Agreement.
Move to approve.
Second.
So we have a first from Trustee Hart and a second from Trustee Chu. Do we have public comment on this matter?
There is no public comment on this item.
Okay, so the public hearing is closed. Ms. Morales, can we have a roll call vote on this?
Yes, Student Board Member Grayden?
Aye.
Trustee Reiser?
Aye.
Trustee Chu?
Aye.
Trustee Gonzalez-Mares?
Aye.
Trustee Hart?
Aye.
Trustee Jankowitz?
Aye.
Trustee Martin?
Aye.
Trustee Water?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you. K2B, Resolution 25-16, I'm sorry, certifying results of November 5, 2024, General Obligation Bond Election.
Move to approve.
Second.
There are firsts from Trustee Chu, a second from Trustee Hart. Do we have any public comment on this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Student Board Member Grayden?
Aye.
And it's a resolution, so we need a roll call vote. I'm sorry. Sorry about that.
Aye.
Trustee Reiser?
Aye.
Trustee Chu?
Aye.
Trustee Gonzalez-Mares?
Aye.
Trustee Hart?
Aye.
Trustee Jankowitz?
Aye.
Trustee Martin?
Aye.
Trustee Water?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you. K2C, the Annual Audit Report, 2023-24.
Move to approve.
Second.
First from Trustee Chu, second from Trustee Hart. Is there any public comment on this matter?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you. Our student board member has departed. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. K2E, Change Order Number Two, Phase Two Switch Project PO and with AMS.net.
We skipped D.
Oh, I'm so sorry. I was so... I was so excited. Okay. K2D, Exclusive Right to Negotiate Agreement with Pillar Housing LLC.
Move to approve.
Second.
First from trustee Hart, second from trustee Chu. Is there public comment on this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you very much. All in favor?
Aye.
K2E, Change Order Number Two, Phase Two Switch Project PO with AMS.net.
Move to approve.
Second.
First from trustee Hart, second from trustee Chu. Is there public comment on this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion, oh, uh, motion passes. K, I'm sorry. K2F, Change Order Number Three, District Wi-Fi Upgrade with AMS.net.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a first from trustee Chu, second from trustee Hart. Is there public comment on this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed or abstained? No? Okay. Moving on. K2G, FID Number Three Point One Dash Twenty-Five, Agreement for Program and Construction Management by Van Pelt Construction Services.
Move to approve.
Second.
First from trustee Chu, second by trustee Hart. Is there public comment on this item?
There is no public comment on this.
Can I just say thank you? Continuing our relationship.
Yes. Duly noted. Thank you so much.
I'd also like to add credit that was there for that committee that first hired Van Pelt. So thank you. You're welcome.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Two, K2H, I Pro Video Insight, VMS Installation and Migration with ASG.
Move to approve.
Second.
First from trustee Chu, second by trustee Hart. Is there public comment on this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed or abstained? No? Motion passes. K2I, Lenovo Desktop PC Purchase with CTI Group.
Move to approve.
Second.
First from trustee Chu, second from trustee Hart. Is there public comment on this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Okay, thank you very much. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed or abstained? Okay, motion passes. K2J, Public Address System Replacement at Thirteen Schools with AMS.net.
Move to approve.
Second.
First from trustee Chu, second from trustee Hart. Is there public comment on this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Motion passes. K2K, Agreement with Q Communications.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have first from trustee Chu, second from trustee Hart. Is there public comment on this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Motion passes. K3, Facility Improvement. K3A, We Have a Resolution 25-17, Adopting Bylaws Governing the Measure B Citizens Bond Oversight Committee.
Move to approve.
Second.
First from trustee Chu, second from trustee Hart. This is a resolution, so a roll call vote. But let's see first if there's any public comment.
There is no public comment on this item.
Okay. Seeing none, roll call vote, please, Ms. Morales.
Trustee Reiser?
Aye.
Trustee Chu?
Aye.
Trustee Gonzalez-Mares?
Aye.
Trustee Hart?
Aye.
Trustee Jankowicz?
Aye.
Trustee Martin?
Aye.
Trustee Water?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Morales. K3B, Resolution 25-19, Authorization for Filing Applications with State Allocation Board for Administered Programs.
Move to approve.
Second.
First from trustee Chu, second from trustee Hart. Is there public comment on this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Okay. It's also a resolution. Roll call vote, please, Ms. Morales.
Trustee Reiser?
Aye.
Trustee Chu?
Aye.
Trustee Gonzalez-Mares?
Aye.
Trustee Hart?
Aye.
Trustee Jankowicz?
Aye.
Trustee Martin?
Aye.
Trustee Water?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you. K3C, Resolution 25-21, Authorizing Filing of Application for State Allocation Board for Facility Hardship. Is there any public comment on this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Move to approve.
Second.
First from trustee Chu, second from trustee Hart. Another roll call vote, please, Ms. Morales.
Trustee Reiser?
Aye.
Trustee Chu?
Aye.
Trustee Gonzalez-Mares?
Aye.
Trustee Hart?
Aye.
Trustee Jankowicz?
Aye.
Trustee Martin?
Aye.
Trustee Water?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you. K3D, F... I'm sorry. Should we keep going?
I prefer.
Yeah, that's what I'd like to do, too. Okay. K3D, FID 1.3 Dash Twenty-Five, Agreement for Consulting Services with Casa Studio.
Move to approve.
Second.
First from trustee Chu, second from trustee Hart. Is there public comment on this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Motion passes. K3E, FID 7.2 Dash Twenty-Five, Agreement with Mobile Modular.
Move to approve.
Second.
First from trustee Chu, second from trustee Hart. Is there public comment on this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion passes. K3F, FID 18.149 Dash Twenty, Request for Least Least Backed Services with Right Contracting.
Move to approve.
Second.
First from trustee Chu, second from trustee Hart. Do we have public comment on this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Motion passes. K3G, FID 18.150 Dash Twenty, Request for Least Least Backed Services with Core West.
Move to approve.
Second.
First by trustee Chu, second from trustee Hart. Is there public comment on this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Motion passes. K4, Instructional Services. K4A, Ratification of Digital Assessment Library Licenses for Special Education from NCS Pearson Inc. and Data Sharing Agreement.
Move to approve.
Second.
First from trustee Chu, second from trustee Hart. Is there public comment on this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you very much. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed or abstained? Motion passes. K4B, 2023-2024 School Accountability Report Cards, Published in 2024-2025.
Move to approve.
Second.
First from trustee Chu, second from trustee Hart. Do we have public comment on this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed or abstained? Motion passes. K4C, Agreement and Data Sharing Agreement with ECO Northwest.
Move to approve.
Second.
First from trustee Chu, second from trustee Hart. Do we have public comment on this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you very much. All in favor? Aye.
May I ask a question?
Yes.